Good evening, and welcome to our Planning Commission meeting of June 14th, 2023. Our agenda this evening includes commission business and the conduct of a public hearing. That public hearing will be on the Reston, proposed Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So a limited, limited agenda this evening, but we do have a number of speakers. Moving into commission business, do any commissioner have a business, have business to address before we proceed with the public hearing? Commissioner Spain?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman, and everyone in attendance. I have an announcement regarding the review of the minutes received. So on May 14th, 2023, the planning commissioners were emailed copies of the meeting minutes for the Planning Commission meetings held in April of 2023. The email consists of following meeting minutes, the April 19th Planning Commission meeting and April 26th, which includes meeting minutes from our meeting with County Executive Brian Hill and Planning Commission public hearing. It is my intention to move approval of the April meeting minutes during the June 28th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Planning commissioners, please be encouraged to review the documents and submit any edits or corrections to staff no later than June 26, 2023. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Secretary Spain. And Secretary Spain, we have just one public hearing this evening. Are you satisfied that this will be the extent of our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Without objection, we will now move on to our public hearing. Our public hearing this evening is on a proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Reston in Hunter Mill District as represented by Commissioner Carter. I want to invite Commissioner Carter to offer a statement regarding the proposed amendment, and then we'll hear a presentation from staff. Commissioner Carter?
I'll be very brief, because I know we have several speakers. So 60 years ago, the Reston Plan was created with a singular voice, Robert Simon and the outstanding design team. This singular voice was informed by the principles of new town planning created in the 20th century by places including Radburn, New Jersey, Baldwin Hills, Los Angeles, and Greenbelt in the Washington area. The proposed Reston Plan is an example of a much more pluralistic approach intended to still extend the legacy of new plan, town planning in America. This pluralistic approach involved numerous meetings with residents, landowners, and their representatives, business owners, and a variety of community groups. The outreach also included, included two meetings with the Land Use Committee of the Board of Supervisors and two meetings with the Land Use Committee of the Planning Commission. I also held my own meeting last week with approximately 75 members of the Reston community to receive additional feedback. This method of pluralistic outreach can be extremely difficult, as we all know, especially if there are opposing views within the community. The Reston Plan with the addendum that we see tonight is the result of this pluralistic planning approach. We will receive additional feedback tonight on our quest to create the best possible plan for Reston. In addition, we're meeting on June 28th for their next session of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. Commissioners, we will hear a presentation from staff, and then, Commissioners, you'll be invited to ask questions. And those questions I ask, that you use those questions solely to clarify your understanding of the content of the proposed amendment. So, content focused. The discussion and debate by Commissioners will be conducted following completion of the public's testimony and following staff's opportunity to respond to the public's testimony. And if you, I'm going to ask, give you an opportunity to react to that. And Mr. Williams, Williams, you should anticipate my calling upon you for any comments you wish to make with regard to the public testimony. So we'll hear the public, I'll ask you to, if you have any reaction to or response to what you heard from the public, and then we'll ask the Commissioners to, you know, kind of weigh in. This is a, kind of, in my view, is the best use of everybody's time, it's sensitive to our public, it's here, and then we'll move on from there. So if it's agreeable to the Commission, we'll ask you to hold your actual discussion until after the testimony and after we've heard from staff, any reaction to the testimony. Any questions about that? Okay, very good. So maybe we have a staff report, please, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm St. Clair Williams with the Department of Planning and Development, and here with me is Chris Caperton, Deputy Director of the Department of Planning and Development. Also in attendance is Tracy Strunk, Director of the Department of Planning and Development, and we have several county staff from several county agencies that have been a part of this Plan Amendment process. So again, this is the staff report for Plan Amendment 2023, UP1, the Reston Area Comprehensive Plan Amendment. On January 14th, 2020, the Board of Supervisors authorized the Reston Comp Plan Study and to initiate a process for additional study and community input on the Comprehensive Plan for Reston. This amendment was authorized to provide an opportunity to address growth-related issues for Reston, including land use in the village centers, affordable housing, pedestrian and bike access to the Silver Line, transportation improvements, and environment and energy efficiency. The Comprehensive Plan was later reauthorized by the Board on January 24th, 2023, to expand the scope of the Plan Amendment to include topic areas for consideration which were not included in the original authorization, including equity, community health, and economic development, as well as land use and intensive recommendations for the village centers, the Reston Town Center North, and certain transit station area sub-districts. The Reston area as defined in the Comprehensive Plan includes all of the area within the planned community of Reston. Reston is developed with a variety of land uses, with most of the land zoned a planned residential community, or PRC, and ranging from detached single-family homes on three-acre lots to townhouse developments. Other land uses within Reston include the village centers, which are mixed-use areas developed with various combinations of neighborhood-serving retail, office, and residential uses, and convenience centers containing local retail and service uses, as well as the Reston Town Center. Reston also includes three designated transit station areas, or TSAs, around the three Metro Rail stations within Reston. That's the Wheelie Reston East Transit Station area, the Reston Town Center Transit Station area, and the Herndon Transit Station area. The core of each station area, approximately one-quarter mile surrounding each station, is designated as a Transit-Oriented Development, or TOD, district. The TOD districts are planned for the highest intensities and are envisioned as vibrant neighborhoods with their own distinct character. The Woodland Park mixed-use area and the Great Oak Residential Communities to the west of Reston are included within the Reston Plan as they are part of the Herndon Transit Station area. To give a brief history on the Reston Master Plan, it was initially adopted in July of 1962 and updated periodically through 1989. In 1991, the sections of Reston fronting along the Dulles Airport Access Road were designated as a suburban center, recognizing the extensive office development in this area. In 2001, transit-related development options were added in the expectation of the planned extension of the Silver Line along Dulles Airport Access Road to Dulles Airport and into Loudoun County. And then, October of 2009, the Ferris County Board of Supervisors authorized a two-phase Reston Master Plan Study. Phase 1 evaluated plan guidance around the three planned Metro Rail stations in Reston and was adopted in February of 2014. Phase 2 evaluated the Reston Master Plan land use map and developed guidance for Reston's residential neighborhoods and commercial areas, including the village centers and the convenience centers, and was adopted in June of 2015. For this amendment process, a 31-member community task force was appointed by the Hunter Mill Supervisor in March of 2020. The task force was comprised of residents representing neighborhood and community organizations, landowners, and representatives from business associations. The task force began meeting in May of 2020, and all of the full task force and subcommittee meetings were hosted on a virtual platform. The full task force held at least 58 public meetings between May 2020 and August of 2022. During the task force process, staff provided the task force with briefings on Comprehensive Plan topics and provided resource support. The task force endorsed their proposed plan language on August 22nd, 2022, and it was released for a public review in September of 2022. Differences between the task force and staff recommendations are highlighted in the staff Upon completion of the task force and publication of the task force's proposed recommendations, community meetings were held in person and virtually, sponsored by the Hunter Mill District Office. The meetings included participation of task force members and county staff. Question-and-answer sessions were held at each meeting. Additionally, meetings were held by civic groups, such as the Reston Association, where the task force members presented their recommendations. This slide here shows some of the key milestones within the Plan Amendment process. I know Commissioner Carter mentioned a few of them, but they include three Planning Commission workshops, first in the fall of 2022, and then in the winter and spring of 2023. There were also two Board of Supervisors Land Use Policy Committee meetings, first in the fall of 2022 and then in the spring of 2023. And as Commissioner Carter mentioned, he hosted a community meeting last week at South Lakes High School. I do want to note that the staff report for the Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment was published on May 24th, 2023, and an addendum to the staff report addressing updates made to the proposed plan based on comments received since publication of the staff report was published yesterday, June 13th, 2023. So now I'm going to discuss the proposed elements or chapters of the proposed Reston Comprehensive Plan, starting with the planning principles. The task force evaluated the current adopted planning principles for Reston and proposed minor editorial updates to ensure the principles continue to reflect Reston's preferences, goals, and aspirations to ensure harmonious development. In addition, two principles were added to address community health and equity in Reston. Moving on to the land use chapter, the proposed land use chapter generally carries forward the existing vision for Reston of focusing higher-density development around the transit station areas, providing safe and convenient multimodal connectivity for all, balancing development with adequate infrastructure, providing housing opportunities for all levels of income, emphasizing the importance of quality design and place-making, and maintaining the lower-density character of the PRC district areas of Reston. The proposed plan language also maintains the existing residential densities in the village centers, which is medium-density multifamily or 13 dwelling units per acre, and includes guidelines for redevelopment of the village centers. Moving to transportation, the proposed transportation vision for Reston continues to include a multimodal system intended to provide safe, efficient, attractive, and dependable travel options in an equitable way for all current and future Reston residents, employees, and visitors. The vision is supported by transportation principles which have been added to the plan, which include: balance future land use with supporting transportation infrastructure, consider the environmental impacts of climate change and other environmental factors, and be applied with specific attention to universal design and to the social equity targeted by the One Fairfax policy. Place-making guidance is included for the first time in the transportation section to encourage high-quality design that enhances the general aesthetics of the public realm and forces optimal, optimal use of the multimodal system. The proposed plan also identifies transportation improvements that are recommended for several specific corridors, including major roadways and the local street network, to achieve the land use vision for Reston and enhance connectivity through the Reston TSAs. One example of this is the Wheelie Reston East Transit Station Area Conceptual Street Network, which has been updated to emphasize the importance of the provision of an east-west street connection between Silkstone Drive and Association Drive, and allow flexibility in the location of that street to allow for the preservation of trees or buildings intended to remain. Moving on to environmental stewardship, the basis for this policy language is the adopted Reston Plan recommendations, much of which is retained with the proposed plan. The proposed environmental stewardship guidance specifies an environmental vision and the associated planning principles expected to guide development in Reston. The chapter introduces the concept of biophilia and the certification of Reston as a biophilic community, emphasizing the benefits and necessity of human interaction with nature. Biophilic communities are intended to include an abundance of natural elements that are visible and accessible to the community members. The proposed text offers insight into various environmental issues germane to the community and offers specific recommendations to address Reston's challenges, and provides recommendations intended to improve storage management sufficiently to enhance the habitat and recreational values of wetlands, streams, and water bodies in Reston. With regards to parks and open space, the proposed Parks and Open Space Guidance continues to acknowledge that the Park's Recreation Open Space System is recognized as one of the most outstanding features in Reston, and includes several large open spaces such as forest and stream conservation areas, lakes, and stream valley parks. The guidance introduces planning principles for parks and open space. And to promote equity and inclusion, the proposed guidance recommends that, recommends the addition and improvements to the Reston Parks Recreation and Open Space Systems to maximize usage of high-quality public-accessible parks and recreational facilities. And as development in the TSAs occur, the plan encourages improvements to publicly-accessible parks and recreational facilities located outside of the TSAs and in areas with higher concentrations of low-income and racially diverse populations. With regards to public facilities, the proposed guidance includes language intended to ensure that the current and planned public facilities will adhere to the principles identified in the Reston Plan, including public participation in decision-making, addressing the housing needs of all ages and incomes, ensuring environmental sustainability, and using green technology in facilities. The public facilities addressed in the plan include public safety, libraries, health and human services, housing and facilities for homeless population, public recreational and entertainment facilities, water and sewer, and solid waste and recycling. The proposed Affordable Housing Chapter aims to advance the following goals: maintain and preserve all existing market-and-committing affordable housing throughout Reston; increase the production of new affordable housing units, especially within the Reston Transit Station areas; provide affordable housing for vulnerable populations; and provide affordable senior housing. The proposed language includes targeted household income tiers, or area median income, or AMI, for rental workforce dwelling units within Reston, which are consistent with the county-wide workforce dwelling unit policy, and maintains the minimum 12% workforce dwelling unit provision and sliding scale in the adopted Comprehensive Plan. The non-transit station area income tiers and commitment levels are consistent with the income tiers and commitment levels in the county-wide workforce dwelling unit policy. The table on the current slide shows the income tiers and highlights the current income tiers targeted for rental workforce dwelling units in the TSAs in blue, and the proposed income tier targets for rental workforce dwellings in the TSAs in yellow. The proposed targets would be 6% of the total units for the 71% to 80% AMI tier, 3% of the total units for the 61% to 70% AMI tier, and 3% of the total units for the 60%, up to 60% AMI tier. And as I mentioned, the total would remain 12% rental workforce dwelling units. The table also shows that the proposed income tier targets for rental workforce dwelling units in non-transit station areas, the column to the far right, is consistent with the county-wide rental workforce dwelling policy, which is 4% to the 71% AMI tier, 2% to the 61% to 70% AMI tier, and 2% at the up to 60% AMI tier. With regards to heritage resources, the recommendations address the need to identify, evaluate, protect, and support both known and potential heritage resources in Reston to retain decisive, a decisive link for interpreting Reston's history and defining and enhancing a sense of place. The proposed text adds language regarding the reconnaissance-level architectural survey conducted by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources in 2019. The survey included buildings constructed in the prime development years of Reston between 1961 and 1978. A new map is proposed identifying the locations of both the architectural survey conducted in 2019 and locations identified in previous efforts. Language is also added, acknowledging that the Reston Center for Associations and Educational Institutions Office Park, or Association Drive Campus, was determined eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places in 2019 for its significance in community planning and development as part of Robert Simon's original plan for Reston. And the inventory of historic maps, of, I'm sorry, and the inventory of historic sites map was updated to include the six local historic sites in Reston, including the United States Geological Survey Building, which is now listed on the National Register of Historic Moving on to public art, the public art recommendations were updated to ensure that developers coordinate public art projects with Public Art Reston early in the design process to assure they meet the Reston Public Art Master Plan criteria, that developers work with locally and nationally-recognized artists and arts organizations early in the process, in the project design process to successfully integrate public art into proposed developments, and that the public art Reston review process will remain transparent with public announcements for selections of public art projects, calls for artists, and reviews of proposals. The proposed Planning a New Town chapter highlights divisions and actions to address equity, community health, and economic development for Reston, which was strongly encouraged by the Reston Task Force. The chapter highlights some of the key guidance found in more detail in other chapters of the proposed plan, and provides a context for addressing these three topics in the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed language is complementary to those policy plan elements that touch on these topics either directly, such as economic development, or indirectly, such as human So, staff recommends that the Comprehensive Plan be modified as shown in the staff report and as modified in the staff report addendum. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my presentation, and again, staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Commissioners, this is an opportunity to ask questions specific to the presentation that we've heard and specific to clarification of, of any issues in the complan, proposed complan amendment. Any discussion of the, of the amendment itself in terms of initiatives that are reflected or not reflected, I'd ask you to hold until we've finished hearing from the public, and then we'll have an opportunity to engage in discussion at that point. Are there any questions? Commissioner Carter, do you have any questions to start us off? Commissioners, any questions of, based on the presentation you've heard or what you've read? Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you, Chairman. I guess I'm not entirely clear about the questions I'm allowed to ask now, but I'll give it a shot, and if I'm out of bounds, then we can, you can correct it.
The spirit of it is, is to kind of clarify now and discuss later.
Okay. All right. So, let me see, there are some specific questions that I had and some that are comments. So, let me just start at the top. The Heritage Resource section, there's several references to Association Drive, and in the Heritage Resource section, which I highly commend, and I'm glad, hopefully that's not a comment, but I, I really appreciate the changes there, and I like that you included the actual locations, et cetera. But I think it just needs to be highlighted, those same points that were made elsewhere where that comes up. So it comes up in the Transportation section, it comes up in the Land Use section, and the language in the Land Use section just seems to be more of a may acknowledging that it is on the Historic Register, Association Drive and its buildings, but not as strong as what's in the, in the Heritage Resource section, which says that that should be encouraged and pursued. And so I think those connections, do they, I'll just leave that with you.
And I would characterize that as a comment, which is great, but it does, it's the kind of thing that would be best offered at the end.
Okay. All right, then I guess I'll just wait till the end. I've got no questions.
Any other, any questions? Clarification? Okay. Hearing, then, no other questions. This is a public hearing. We have 15 listed speakers. Bear with me, I'd like to just clarify the speaking process. Individuals wishing to provide testimony have a number of options. You can testify here in person, or they can provide testimony by phone or YouTube video. At the designated point in the public hearing, I will call for any speakers from the speakers' list, and there are 15 of those, and they will either come forward on their video, or their video will be shown, or they will be connected by telephone. There will then be an opportunity for anyone else who would like to speak to the application to come down to the podium or to call in on a number that will be provided on the TV screen. Speakers testifying via video must sign up and submit their video no later than 9:00 a.m. on the day prior to the hearing. In that case, in this case, that would have been yesterday at 9:00 a.m. For all testimony, you are given five minutes to speak as an individual. If you are the spokesperson for a group, you are given 10 minutes. Should you decide during the public hearing that you wish to be heard and did not previously sign up to do so, you will be permitted three minutes to speak. So those are the, kind of, the basic ground rules. As I mentioned, we do have 15 speakers, and I will work through the list as, as established by our staff, as was called in. I'm going to call two or three names in a row. If you're the second or third speaker, I'd ask you to come down and be prepared to step up to the podium after the, the previous speaker, the speaker before you finishes his or her remarks. So the first up will be Mike Jennings, who will have five minutes, and then I ask Emily Klein-Gibson and William Peniman to step up and be ready. Mr. Jennings, you're speaking as a, for yourself, and you have five minutes. How are you?
Hi, good, thanks. And actually, I've changed. I am speaking for the Reston Chamber of Commerce. I didn't, I made a mistake there in filling out that form.
Let me just ask, staff, is there any issue with his, changing his affiliation tonight? Very good, 10 minutes then, sir.
I, I don't need 10 minutes, so.
That's okay. I just had to clarify.
Okay. Good evening again. My name's Mike Jennings. I'm a member of Supervisor Alcorn's Reston Comp Plan Task Force as an alternate representing the Greater Reston Chamber of Commerce. I'm also Vice Chair of the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee, which has to apply the Comprehensive Plan. I've lived in Reston for almost four decades and owned a small business in Reston for almost two decades, and today I am representing the Greater Reston Chamber of Commerce. In case not all Commissioners know, there was nowhere near unanimity on the task force draft of the Reston Comp Plan that was released in late August. There were 31 members on the task force, yet the vote on the final draft in August was seven to seven with one abstention. Less than half the task force voted on the final product. It was only approved when the person abstaining decided, well, rather than just have this thing stall out, let's get it moving, and he changed his vote to a yes. I won't go into the details of the chamber's concerns with the task force draft, but generally speaking, we felt that there were too many prescriptive and restrictive objectives in the task force draft that would have prevented Reston from fulfilling the promise of the Silver Line. And as a Reston Planning and Zoning Committee member, I could foresee nothing but trouble in trying to evaluate development applications against many of the plan's new guidelines. Consequently, we, the chamber, view the Comp Plan draft recently published by the Consequently, we, the chamber, view the comp plan draft recently published by the county staff, including the recent addendum, to be a significant improvement over the task force's draft. Overall, this staff draft plan incorporates some new elements and modernizes outdated components while still protecting non-TSA slash TOD areas. We feel staff has done a nice job trimming things from the task force draft that were impractical and/or extraneous to the purpose of a comprehensive plan. And please know that the staff draft, in our opinion, was not a rewrite done in isolation. Task force chapter leads, including the chamber's CEO, who was co-lead of the Economic Development Chapter, had many interactions with staff to discuss the revisions. In these meetings with staff, we found them very open to our suggestions regarding revisions they were looking to propose. We felt it was a very collaborative process. Consequently, we fully support the staff version that has been released. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Next up is Emily Klein Gibson, who is representing Sierra Club Great Falls Group. Ms. Gibson, Klein Gibson, you have ten minutes. How are you?
I'm doing well. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Emily Klein Gibson, and I am representing the Sierra Club Great Falls Group tonight. The Sierra Club Great Falls Group is submitting the following comments regarding the draft Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Our comments focus on the environmental stewardship and land use sections of the draft plan. Starting with environmental stewardship. First, stormwater management. With the increased frequency of intense rainstorms, the current proposed stormwater measure will not adequately protect the area's stream and water quality. The strong stormwater standards recommended by the Reston Task Force, which include capturing the first inch of runoff regardless of floor area ratio, and limiting runoff from a ten year storm to twenty-five percent or forty percent of the total twenty-four hour volume and the peak runoff should be adopted without the weakening changes that were made in the draft plan. For green buildings and energy efficiency, the county's community-wide energy and climate action plan calls for greenhouse gas emission reduction goals of fifty percent by 2030, seventy-five percent by 2040, and carbon neutrality by 2050. Buildings and energy efficiency account for twenty-four point seven percent of greenhouse gas emission reductions under C cap. Achieving one quarter of such a large scale of emission reductions, even as the county adds new development and higher densities, will require the highest, highest standards of green building and energy efficiency. Fairfax cannot meet these goals if it continues to approve construction of new buildings that do not meet or even approach net zero emission standards. The draft plan calls for new buildings to meet Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Silver Standards. This is inadequate to meet the county's goals and its residents' needs. The plan must set higher standards for energy efficiency and green building for new development. The Reston Task Force recommended that the plan provide guidance for new development to achieve at minimum LEED Gold or Platinum certification or the equivalent, or alternatively implementing other accepted efficiency and green building measures, such as net zero construction per the International Energy Conservation Code. To meet C cap goals for buildings, the draft plan must incorporate more robust standards, such as the ones recommended by the task force. For electrical vehicle charging, transportation accounts for forty-four percent of greenhouse gas emissions in Fairfax County. Reducing transportation emissions on the scale called for in C cap will require a rapid scaling up of EV charging infrastructure. However, under the draft plan, builder's current commitment is for EV charging to account for only one to two percent of new parking and residential and non-residential buildings. We do not see how the county can meet C cap goals for transportation emission reduction without much higher standards for EV charging infrastructure. The task force provided a set of recommendations for achieving these standards, including installation of EV charging stations sufficient to serve fifty percent of residential parking spaces and twenty percent of commercial parking spaces. We would urge adoption of these recommendations for EV charging. For land use, density levels in TSAs. In the one-fourth to one-half mile transit station areas, the plan calls for residential mixed-use areas but does not set minimum densities. As a result, the plan may fail to take full advantage of the county's $6 billion investment in the Silver Line and lead to less compact, walkable development. The final plan should establish minimum densities for developments in the residential mixed-use areas, or at least allow for other TSA developers to propose to incorporate into their projects potential density not used by small developers, so long as the overall density in the TSA areas does not exceed that area maximum. The latter approach would permit densities to be transferred in a manner similar to what is allowed for jointly developed projects. This concludes the Sierra Club Great Falls Group comments on the draft Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, Ms. Gibson Klein, can you come back? Commissioner Cortina?
I just have a question. I was trying to take notes, and I missed your stormwater part.
Would you like me to?
Yeah, just the actual percentage reduction in which storm.
Yes, so the stormwater standards recommended by the Reston Task Force, which includes capturing the first inch of runoff regardless of floor area ratio, and limiting runoff from a ten-year storm to twenty-five percent or forty percent of the total twenty-four hour volume and the peak runoff.
Okay, I love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein Gibson. Next up, you have Mr. William Peniman, who represents himself and has five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm William Peniman, a longtime Reston resident. I've served on this most recent task force and on the last task force. So, that was six years of my life. Another ten went to, actually, a lot of overlap, but another ten has gone to the Planning and Zoning Committee and various other organizations. I'm deeply committed to the future of Reston, and that's why I'm speaking. Oh, by the way, I'm the one who abstained initially and then made my vote in favor of adoption of the plan as recommended by the task force at that time, because it was in the best interest of the community, notwithstanding my personal disagreements with a few items. So, let that be known. What I'd like to focus on, though, are issues primarily related to climate and climate impacts, some of which overlaps what Sierra Club said. First, these are TSAs. The county needs to maximize the density of residential and commercial development within a walkable, bikeable distance from the transit stations. That's what the money was spent for, to build the transit stations. That's what will bring down traffic overall, and that's what will help to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It is important to have a minimum density in the residential mixed-use areas, because otherwise we're going to see townhouses and low-density developments that will undercut the businesses that are, need walking people. They need, and it'll undercut the use of the transit. So, there should be a minimum of one point two five, or perhaps one FAR to the one point five FAR that's in there. Second, the county and the comp plan should, for Reston, require a higher level of energy efficiency, clean energy, and EV charging than is generally applicable. And the reasons are simple. This is the area that is developing fastest, or nearly fastest. So much money has been put into this area. It needs to do the best it can for the long term, because these buildings will last fifty to a hundred years. I mean, the idea that the county can meet its cool county's commitments, which were made more than a decade ago, or the C cap commitments or any other, it's nonsense. If you keep building buildings at the level they've been built before, and having a nice list of things that are encouraged without any more push than that will do exactly what was done in the existing plan, they will be largely ignored by the developers. So, I encourage you to adopt the standards that the task force recommended for energy efficiency, EV readiness, and clean energy. The EV readiness, by the way, is readiness. It only means putting in the conduits, the reserving space, having electrical space available, but not putting in chargers until the demand develops. But it is developing rapidly, and you don't want to discourage it. The county should also strengthen the stormwater management section. As of now, I mean, I agree, one, capturing the first inch is good, but that should apply to all the buildings, not just the ones of greater than one point oh FAR, because if you have that level, people will come in point nine FAR and avoid a major obligation, it'll just go away. That doesn't make sense. Also, tying the total runoff to the two-year rain event is frankly totally inadequate in a world in which the rain events are getting more severe and projected to get still more severe. So, the rain event of the past thirty years is not the same. We suggested initially twenty-five-year storm event. We reduced it to ten in the hopes of working something out with the staff, but it should be stronger than what's here. You can find our recommendations in the task force plan. One other thing on the energy efficiency and green energy standards. The task force plan calls for bonus densities to be offered to developers who go well beyond the base levels that are expected. So, if you get to LEED Platinum or its equivalent, net zero, whatever, there should be bonus densities. I mean, if you're not going to force them, at least give them an incentive to move up there. That's what's of interest to the long term, and I guess my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ask Gray Wells is next up, Charter Oak Homeowners Association, and if Gary Malpin and Michelle Hane will be on deck, please. We appreciate it.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Gray Wells, representing Charter Oak Town Homes in Reston. I grew up in Reston, first moved there in nineteen seventy. My husband and I moved around a little bit after that, but, but we decided to come back to Reston because we really love it. Thank you for letting me raise our concerns about the idea of the connection connecting Rest, sorry, connecting Sunset Hills directly with North Shore Drive. We feel that this is an awful idea, and it needs to be shut down as a possibility. Here are a few of our concerns that are, my neighbors and I have. North Shore Drive is a residential road. It connects historic Reston neighborhoods in what I call Old Town Reston. North Shore Drive is a neighborhood road. Look at all the apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes along this road. It is not and should not become a commuter traffic road. Most of the neighborhoods on North Shore Drive were built in the sixties and seventies, and they don't have enough parking for the families who live there. So, many of the people park on North Shore Drive. The street parking narrows the road, making it more dangerous with more and more traffic. This connection would make it more dangerous for the people who park on the road, sorry about that, as they try to get in and out of their cars. It's already a safety hazard for those people who park on the road, and it will just get more and more difficult with more traffic. Traffic on the road is busy enough. This new connection, if it came, would be unbearable and unsafe. The connection would intersect on North Shore Drive at a curve, which adds another danger. Adding more traffic to a neighborhood road where there are children and golfers and pedestrians and dogs and bicycles, it's asking for trouble. It's asking for accidents. It's asking for a more dangerous intersection on the road in Old Town Reston. For pedestrians, it makes it much more difficult to cross the road. As it is, my husband and I, we walk our dog. We have to cross North Shore Drive every night, and sometimes we have to wait a few minutes, and it would just get worse and worse. Bicycleists, they ride on North Shore Drive, and so right now they're already riding and negotiating with moving cars, cars that are parked, cars that are liable to open their doors at any moment. And again, the dangers to the bicyclists would increase if we allowed this connection to come through. It would make it more difficult for the golfers, because Hidden Creek Golf Club is divided by North Shore Drive, so it would make it much more difficult for those folks. I heard something or read something in the plan about a wheelie grid of streets. That doesn't blend into the Old Town Reston feel that North Shore Drive is a part of. I'm, you know, you need to keep, we need to keep commuter traffic in the commercial TSA corridor and main arteries, not on North Shore Drive. Relieving congestion on the commercial streets by moving the traffic onto a neighborhood street is a dangerous idea. It creates a cut-through type of road, which brings its own set of problems. Drivers will use the cut-through to avoid lights on Sunset Hills and other lights, depending on their route. Contrast that, contrast this proposal with the town of Herndon, which protected neighborhoods from commuter traffic by putting up no entry signs for non-residents. We have an opportunity to do better here by just not allowing this road to be put in. The connection will make it more difficult for residents to get out of their neighborhoods because of the increased traffic. As it is, I have to pull out slowly and wait for, for cars to go. It'll make it worse. This connection would adversely affect the neighborliness of the area. Residents cross North Shore Drive to get to their friends across the street in another neighborhood. We cross the street to get to the basketball court or to the neighborhood pool on the other side of North Shore Drive. This connection would increase the number of speeding cars on North Shore Drive. We already have speeders, more cars, more speeders. I even had somebody the other day who didn't like the fact that I was going the speed limit, and he crossed the line and went around me with all those cars parked along. It was very dangerous. It would also increase road noise for the neighbors who live along and back up to North Shore Drive. We feel very strongly about keeping Old Town Reston intact and close to the original feel. It's the future Old Town Alexandria. We have to protect it now. Another reason to stop this idea are trees. There are many old-growth trees that would be chopped down to create the road, beautiful oaks and sycamores. Most are, most are estimated to be over a hundred years old, some a hundred and fifty years. So, in closing, the connection is a dangerous proposal. The adverse effects of this connection will be with Reston forever. It will irreparably damage the old Reston area. Please, don't allow this road proposal to continue. Stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Ms. Wells, have you submitted written testimony as part of your?
I have not. I can, I've got it.
If you would, I think it would be helpful.
I will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Malpin, then followed by Ms. Hane, and then followed by Ms. DeLucian. How are you, sir?
Fine, how are you?
Very well.
My name is Gary Malpin, and I have, speaking for myself alone and not in any group at all. I was a member of the task force specifically, and pleased to be a member of that large task force that Mike mentioned earlier. I would say, talking about, since Mike and, and Bill mentioned the August meeting, I attended almost every task force meeting and almost all subgroup meetings I was involved in, and at that August task force meeting, I happened to be out of the country, and I would have voted to make this plan completely approved. So, just wanted to mention that since it came up before. My testimony is on two focuses. First, to thank all those that participated in putting this comp plan together, and specifically those that spend inordinate amounts of time to make this happen and give you the great plan that you're reviewing now. The plan set up by the task, the plan led by Supervisor Alcorn had a very large task force, as I just said, that he set up with a huge number of meetings for two and a half years. Supervisor Alcorn was at almost every one of those that had many chapter subgroups, such as land use, transportation, parks and recreation, et cetera. And each one of those had a leader. And each one of those had a leader and reported back to the total task force. I think that's important. I want to emphasize that each group and the overall task force was charged with maintaining agreement with the county policy plan, which I know from being on-- which leading one subgroup and being on a lot of others was done religiously. I think that's important. Many people surely spent more than 1,000 hours easily on the task force meetings, the subgroup meetings, work in between. It's got a lot of effort and review that went into this. So, I want to thank the task force members as a whole and that spent, you know, the extraordinary amounts of time. So, I will not go into naming some of those, but I just have to name one, Lynn Molson, who had led the land use subcommittee. She was on multiple others, and she did a lot of the overall work to put this together as a whole. Of course, nobody got all they wanted. I didn't. But I think when we put all this together and worked together, we came up with an excellent plan that you have before you. I would like to thank John Carter, who was constantly everywhere for everyone on this plan as it went through, including the task force. He really is amazing in his knowledge, work ethic, perseverance, and quiet leadership. Next, I would like to thank the county staff, who also worked tirelessly on the Reston plan, along with their other county duties. I found them cooperative, helpful, very knowledgeable, and making great contributions. And to me, they deserve thanks from the people and businesses of Reston. I will just name the key coordinators, Chris Caperton and St. Clair Williams, who are right here for their great work. But there were many more individual areas, such as transportation, and a couple of those people are here tonight. Last, I would like to thank Supervisor Alcorn, who set up the task force, managed it to include every total task force meeting, I believe lead every task force meeting, I believe, but maybe one. Coordinating with the county assured that there were major outreach efforts beyond the task force throughout Reston. Some of those have been mentioned by St. Clair and John earlier. And then to other groups that are interested parties, like the Sierra Club, who's already testified. These were done multiple times. I think it's a real treat of force for Supervisor Alcorn and the great support he received from his staff. All this huge amount of work led to a plan before you, which is the first plan for Reston overall in 60 years. Is written with more-- is more easily read by citizens and staff with enhanced structure and organization while being shorter by 40 pages and also include three new chapters. And also went to a lower level than past plans in looking at things like FAR and mixed land use categories for land base. In addition to the extensive review process I've talked about, this has been looked at by the Port of Supervisors Land Use Subcommittee twice. I'm proud to be on this, and thank you for your time in listening to me tonight.
Yes. Thank you so much. Michelle Hain, followed by Ms. DeLucian, and then followed by Ms. Molson. Ms. Hain, you are representing the Reston Association, and you have 10 minutes.
Hi. I'm Michelle-- hi, I'm Michelle Hainey. I'm a land use planner with Reston Association. I've been here a few weeks. As you know, Larry Butler is retiring next week after 41 years. And John Farrell is traveling, our CEO, so he wasn't able to be here tonight. So, I have notes from meeting with them and Mac, our CEO. So, I'm just going to share with you a little bit about Reston. I've lived there for 12 years, and I will disclose Gray was my neighbor for about 10 of those years. So, I love Reston also. I am speaking on behalf of Reston Association tonight, though. If you don't know, Reston is a 501(c)(4) organization, whose principal activity is the provision of parks, recs, open space, and just providing general public services. Its board represents 63,000 members. More than 7,000 of them voted in the recent election for the board. Within RA, there are over 9,000 multifamily units. It is not just single-family houses everywhere. It's actually hard to find a single-family house in Reston. I took four years to move away from Gray. Yes, so we only have 4,000 single-family homes in Reston. So, we have a mix of residences, residential types. Reston Association also owns over 1,350 acres of open space. We manage 15 pools, 54 tennis courts, 17 ball fields, eight pavilions, four community trails, and we have 55 miles of paved trails. That doesn't count our unpaved trails. So, Reston manages quite a bit and provides a lot of recreational services, camps, senior services. It's not your typical HOA with a pool and a totlot, as John Farrell likes to say. So, all of these facilities are open to the general public. The paved trails, tennis courts, you can get a pass. I can bring guests. If you'd like to contact me, I'll take you to the pool or play pickleball with you someday. It's great. So, we have an operating budget of $20 million that 23,000 members support. So, as you know, Reston isn't new. We have a lot of facilities that need updating and maintaining. The capital projects there are constant. We always have a pool or two that we're resurfacing. You know, I'm just outside that staff group, and they're constantly talking about a pool. You know, you have a leak here. You have, you know, stormwater management there with our dams and other things. So, we have budgeted $18 million over the next five years just to take on some of that work. So, April 20th this year, RA President John Farrell met with Mr. Carter, Commissioner Carter, excuse me, and they talked about some of the updates that John and the commissioner talked about with Mr. Farrell about what we would like to see in the plan. And one of the big things that we actually did see some progress with, with the addendum that Mr. Farrell is really grateful for, is the inclusion of the recommendation that the residential units that are coming on board either join Reston Association or Reston Town Center Association. So, as a member, I'm paying for these new developments to come in and use the paths, use all these facilities, but they're not paying into it. So, you know, once you have these new developments, marketing all of the great things about Reston, but then not joining, it keeps adding to the pressure for Reston to have to shoulder the snow removal and updating of the sidewalks, fixing all these facilities. So, we are grateful that that new language was added, and Mr. Farrell asked me to say thank you for that. But he would also, you know, there's always more. He has some other issues that he would like to address and keep the public comment open for, such as, on page 61, the current draft talks about convenience center at Lake Newport. If you've ever been there, it used to be the sales centers for Reston. It's overlooking a lake. Reston Association bought it. It's called-- referred to as the lake house, and it's part of one parcel that is used for summer camps, or you can, you know, throw a graduation party there or have a business meeting. So, it's not a convenience center. It is part of the community park, where you can go play tennis over here, go to Brown's Chapel, play baseball, or go on the fitness trail, play basketball. So, it's part of all one campus. So, that is one of the issues. Another one is on page 100 in the Parks and Recs chapter. The Fairfax County Park Authority is listed as the main provider of parks. There's an issue with, you know, you know, we have less than 100 acres of park space by the park authority as opposed to our, you know, 13,500-- or, sorry, 1,350 acres, excuse me. So, that was one of the things we want to address, and just the whole importance of Reston being a partner. And I think that's important to work with Fairfax County. You know, I got the opportunity to talk with St. Clair last week and really learn a lot about what's going on, and he was really helpful. And I would like to see us be able to work together on these types of issues. So, another one is on page 105. It says that the Fairfax County Park Authority has control over the decisions of the association membership regarding RA facilities. So, our CEO has-- takes issue with that language, and I think if we could work out something that is more to the point of what RA would like to do, I think that just might be a language issue item. So, also, Mr. Farrell would like to submit his redlined copy of, you know, these types of issues so that I'm, you know, you don't want someone standing up here droning on about this. He requests that he can submit redlined comments to Commissioner Carter to talk about all of these items, one by one. And I believe you two spent quite a bit of time together recently and have hammered out some. And hopefully, there'll be other addendums to just clear up some language, is my understanding. So, to close, we are asking for the record of this public hearing to remain open so that RA's proposed changes to the draft can receive more consideration, and we can just work on some of these other issues. Thank you for your time. I submitted the written comments to the clerk, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioner Carter?
So, just one request. It's fine to send them to me, but send them to the staff at the same time. That would be much more efficient.
Well, more specifically, my understanding is, and Commissioner Carter, I believe, can confirm that we are going to-- he is going to seek a deferral. During that deferral period, the record will remain open. Any communication relative to the comp plan, proposed comp plan amendment, should be addressed to the commission, and that'll get to the staff.
Okay.
Chairman.
Richard Wolf, follow.
I have a question for the witness.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if you're the right person to ask this. I'm familiar with the Reston Museum, which take, you know, educates people about the history and so on of Reston. Is there a separate Reston Historical Society or Association that you know of?
Yes. I can provide you more information. Suzanne Zern, who's very active in Fairfax County, if you've ever heard of her.
Who?
Suzanne Zern.
Yes.
I know she's on the board, and I can contact her to give you the details about the history because there's quite a bit. I mean--
Well, let me tell you why I'm asking.
Okay.
We have a revised heritage resources section here, which I think is very-- has a lot of positive things in here in an attempt to identify and to protect, to the extent possible, historic resources, including some that were identified in 2019 in the survey, as well as others that may be identified in the future. My experience is that it helps to have a specific organization or group of individuals who are focused very specifically on heritage resources in an area like Reston, so that anytime an issue comes up in connection with a land use matter, that they are become-- they are aware of it, that they get involved in it, and that they bring the concerns and the issues to the staff, to us, to whomever it needs. And so, that's why I was asking to see if there is-- because there are, you know, there's a bunch of resources. They're not all historic resources. It's not all George Washington slept here.
Correct.
It's along in the association drive area, for example. There's a lot of very interesting mid-century architecture done by some very well-known mid-century architects. And they-- it deserves recognition, and it deserves consideration. As you know, we lost a Brower building earlier in connection with that because it had not been noticed in the plan as a historic resource. And I-- so, I just-- I'm raising it for that reason, to make sure that there's an individual or group of individuals or whatever who are paying close attention and are willing to jump in when issues arise.
So, I personally know several people on that board. So, I guess my question is, how would you like that information? How should I share it? How can I connect you?
If you would, just respond back with a-- with that information.
Yeah, if you'd give me that information.
And you can send it to Commissioner Wolf, but the whole commission should receive it. So, I would just send it to the commission's office, and then that will be distributed to the--
Then it'll be spread around.
The full commission.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Ms. DeLucian, who's representing Ivy Oak Square. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're an individual. You'll have five minutes. Are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You're on the telephone. I missed that notation. Welcome. And then, if I could ask, we have Ms. Molson, who's in person, representing Citizens Association, Reston Citizens Association. You're up next, followed by Perry Neal, who would be representing yourself in person. So, Ms. DeLucian, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. Please, by a very fast throw of hands, how many of you would allow a developer to build on a headwater for difficult run? Okay. No. Then why are developers given density credit for not building on those kinds of EQC areas? My name is Jan Dacquiste, resident of Ivy Oak Square. I draw your attention to recommendation number 29, the land use open space table. I would like to add a footnote to a reference that says stormwater EQCs may not be used in density calculation. An example, the Fannie Mae application includes the headwaters and storm management for difficult run in their calculations. They say, "Oh, I won't build there," which means, "Give me credit for not building on something I cannot build on." It's not like open space, which can be built on. They claim that their dwelling unit per acre is three. However, it's because their density calculation includes the EQC and the land that they are giving to Fairfax County parks. They are building 84 units on five acres of land. That gives you a true dwelling unit per buildable acre of 17. That cluster will have the same footage as the Spectrum Center off South Road with La Madeline Best Buy and Container Store, but two stories taller. During the approval process, staff identified concerns of density. When I presented my argument to the Board of Supervisors, the specific wording the chairman gave me was, "We investigated it very carefully, but were unable to find any language for or against." This is the only place where that precedent can be prevented. This is supported by the Stormwater Management Implementation on page 132 of the comprehensive plan. It discusses difficult run, and it's important to Northern Virginia, not just Reston, but across Fairfax County and Arlington. It is implied by phrases that require it to be managed, but not that it is unbuildable. Again, density and FAR calculations cannot include land that cannot be built on. They already have an incentive. They physically can't. We have to codify this in comprehensive plan. Recommendation number five about opportunities for multifamily housing. Sorry for switching so quickly. I believe a contradiction to the comprehensive plan, page 45, respects surrounding neighborhood. The plan says concentrate the tallest buildings and the highest land use intensities closest to the metro station. I recommend that the sentence be clarified to, "This transition-- I recommend that the sentence be clarified to, "This transition must be reflected within the parcel itself, or you could end up with a five-story big box 100 feet from your back door," my situation. On another topic, rubble station number four on page 19, affordable senior housing. I appreciate the change, Mace, to say permanent housing. I would like a clearer definition of permanent housing to prevent situations like almost happened with the Bowman-Green area. That public-private development plan would have had Fairfax County housing, their units, back to Folger Pratt at 30 years to allow the developers to recoup their losses by converting them to million-dollar condos. Reston will be built out at that time and those residents will have to move to Maryland, Richmond, West Virginia. We already have four- to five-year waiting lists. They will be removed from their existing support fixtures, church, longtime friends, medical, social services that they rely on to survive. Imagine, you hit your head on a car door in your 30s. You are no longer able to work and not at the top of your earning potential. SSDI will be minimal. You use up your resources hoping your recovery will get you back to work. You grew up in Simon's Reston dream. You don't need assisted living, just an affordable place to live as a member of a disadvantaged population. If you're still alive 30 years from now, you are F.O.L. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you leave, Ms. DeLucian, you've given very specific recommendations. In other words, you've highlighted recommendations and specific language that you would like to see. I would recommend that you supply that to us in writing. That will facilitate our consideration.
All right. Thank you very much and I will do so.
Thank you. Ms. Molston, representing the Reston Citizens Association is next with, you have 10 minutes. Then Mr. Neal, followed by Mr. Malcolm, who will also be representing yourself in person. So if, if Mr. Malcolm and Mr. Neal could step up and be ready. Ms. Molston, welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Nadolski-Eichner, Commissioner Carter, and Planning Commissioners, good evening. My name is Lynn Molston. I reside at 11472 Lynx Drive and serve as President of Reston Citizens Association. You also know that I've served on the task force, leading up the land use chapter and the parks rec and open space. And I also serve now on Reston Planning and Zoning. Very proud of that. But I, I do appreciate your attention this evening as we consider the Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment before you. Reston Citizens Association has identified 15 key areas that were sent to you yesterday at 12:36 PM. Much to our surprise, we received an email from Fairfax County at 2:44 announcing a staff report addendum for the Reston Comprehensive Plan Study is now available for public review. We are still poring through the 25-page addendum. So rather than risk identifying items that have already been addressed, I would like to focus with specificity on seven areas of concern. First, the removal of an important section of the task force adopted draft. That is the Reston area-wide land use calculations. Let's look at the supporting facts for making this information a part of the plan amendment. On March 27th, 2018, then Department of Planning and Zoning Director Fred Selden wrote a response to a Reston Association request to amend the Reston master plan to add back a population cap. DPZ acknowledged the original land use plan map for Reston included a table, population data, that referenced population ranges for portions of Reston and a total not to exceed 78,000 people. He said, wrote, "Staff can support the inclusion of a future population target as part of the vision for Reston, as was done in the plan for Tysons." Director Selden went on to write, "In our view, this target should not be referred to as a cap, but as an articulation of the future vision for Reston's growth. The monitoring of Reston's population growth should be based on information from the U.S. Census, rather than using the formulas in the PRC provisions of the zoning ordinance. This will more accurately reflect the actual population in Reston by using a widely accepted standard of measurement," close quote. Prior to becoming Hunter Mill District Supervisor, Walter Alcorn advised putting Reston's target buildout population in the Comprehensive Plan so that it will apply to all of Reston's regarding of zoning district. He stated that if the Comprehensive Plan is not changed, the PRC district will soon become irrelevant. This is for new applicants because developers would choose their own zoning districts. This was printed in the Washington Post on June 18th, 2018. The staff proposed changes failed to conform to the work plan adopted in April of this year as it pertains to projected population thresholds for Reston and how to ensure that population, infrastructure, and the environment are all in balance. You have before you, page 17, from the task force adopted draft plan. RCA requests that the staff suggestion to remove this section be denied. As stated in the task force text, the figures are estimates, but they provide overall guidance for more than just Fairfax County Park Authority and Fairfax County Public Schools. The Reston land use calculation section with charts must be included in Reston's Comprehensive Plan for the reasons Supervisor Alcorn stated. Second, despite community feedback to the contrary, and this is building on Gray's testimony, staff continues to push for a vehicular roadway connection between Sunset Hills Road and North Shore Drive via American Dreamway. The task force vote was held during a sparsely attended meeting and narrowly passed. This proposed connection would destroy the stability of this North Shore Drive neighborhood. Charter Oak Cluster, Ivy Oak Condominiums, North Shore Cluster, and Fairway Clusters are all in direct proximity and have vigorously opposed this addition to the conceptual grid of streets, as has Reston Association. Supervisor Alcorn has said on numerous occasions, "This is the people's plan." RCA requests that the road connection between Sunset Hills Drive and North Shore Drive via American Dreamway be removed from the conceptual grid of streets map where referenced. Third, there is disagreement between staff and task force recommendations as it pertains to the provision for 12 athletic fields. The current plan text reads, "A goal of adding capacity equivalent to 12 athletic fields serving Reston should be achieved through development contributions of land and/or facilities. At a minimum, three new full-service athletic fields should be provided within the corridor. It is further recommended that these three fields be distributed throughout the corridor with one new field in each TSA as a goal." RCA requests that current plan text be carried forward verbatim. Fourth, in the Roland Clark Place section, staff claims that the task force recommended that redevelopment would require a rezoning out of the PRC district, which would be the first removal of an area this size from the PRC district in Reston. This is an inaccurate statement. Upon review of the adopted task force draft, it is noted that the task force does not make this recommendation. RCA requests that the adopted text from the task force be carried forward. That text reads, and I quote, "This neighborhood area is located between Sunrise Valley Drive and the Dulles Toll Road with access from Roland Clark Place. The area was originally approved as part of a conference center development with retail, office, and hotel uses at a maximum of 3.55 FAR. Two recently completed single-family attached developments are located along Sunrise Valley Drive and on both sides of Roland Clark Place. An existing office building, the Pond Building, is located along the Dulles Toll Road and accessed by a Roland Clark pipe stem. This area is planned with the existing intensity and use. The remaining two parcels located south of the Dulles Toll Road have been combined to include a recently completed multifamily development and an existing five-story office building. These remaining parcels will remain as residential mixed use with a total of 75% residential and 25% non-residential uses. Include a second access point with the redevelopment of the existing office building and an open space area to serve the entire Roland Clark neighborhood. A wide range of public uses and office uses are encouraged as part of the redevelopment of the existing office building to satisfy the required 25% non-residential uses required for both parcels. Resolving problems with noise from the Dulles Toll Road is a significant issue for residential development in this area," close quote. It is acknowledged that an SSPA for this area is being brought forward. However, zoning out of the PRC district is not recommended by the task force. Fifth, why has staff removed the square footages from the adopted text pertaining to library, shelter, and recreation center and deleted the reference to the 30 existing affordable townhomes? RCA requests that staff return the square footages to this section and others that reference the library and affordable housing and reinstate the reference to the 30 existing affordable townhouses as adopted by the task force. To be specific, the new expanded regional library calls for a minimum of 39,000 square feet plus 4,000 square feet of meeting space. The Embry-Rucker Shelter is to be expanded to approximately 25,000 square feet with a daytime service facility and attached 15 to 30 transitional housing units. The Hunter Mill District Fairfax County Park Authority Recreation Center has a minimum of 90,000 square feet. And this is Fairfax County Park Authority full-size rectangular athletic field with adjoining playground, and this is inclusive of underground parking. Sixth, the environmental stewardship chapter contains a section regarding noise. Are these guidelines for all development in the TSA area, including repurposed buildings? A post-development noise study seems a waste of time and money unless there's going to be some further noise mitigation requirements. Where is the post-development noise study guidance? RCA requests that a definition of noise-sensitive uses be provided for reference and a link to the HUD Noise Guidebook and/or the Federal Highway Administration Guidelines be included in this section. Finally, given the lateness of staff's addendum to their report, we are asking that the Planning Commission defer moving forward with this plan amendment for at least 21 days so that the Reston community may have an opportunity to fully evaluate staff suggested changes and provide accurate feedback to you. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Carter.
And as I have earlier, when you have very specific recommendations like you have offered, it would be great to have that in writing.
You've got it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have Mr. Perry Neal, who's in person. You have five minutes, sir. Mark Malcolm is up next and then Mark Looney. Both of you will have five minutes. Yes, sir. How, whoop. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Okay, so you all know why I'm here. I live at 1791 Ivy Oak Square. And I'm here to represent her. There's nobody here to represent her.
Well-
She was born on this-
Well, no!
And we searched, searched, and we found this place.
I know.
And when you let her out the back of this gate.
No!
Each one of you is a-
No!
-year-old stick, Maury, or 150-year-old oak. And this plan is going to take a bulldozer and go right through there. And she will not have a place to play. That's what you're gonna do.
No!
There, I'm not saying the plan at all is bad. The plan's great, but you got some, you gotta go down in the details. You're doing something that you don't need to do. Did you hear what Jan said? This is a beautiful old building, so you're gonna take a commercial road? I moved there because I walk, I work at Microsoft. I walked to Microsoft. I love Reston. She loves it. You're gonna take a commercial road and you're gonna go right through this place.
I know!
You said environmentalism. We want to keep our heritage.
Sir, 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 please direct your comments to us.
But he's part of it. He was speaking too. Your plan said-
I'm just, I'm just saying, sir. Speak to us.
Take care of the people. Now this, look at this. Fairfax County-
Oh!
...to the nondiscrimination on basis of disability-
No! No!
...activities.
No!
Okay?
Oh, no!
Reasonable is the word. It's all about this and that. This goes forward, this gets hurt.
Yeah, sometimes saying that.
Reasonable. Is it reasonable to do this? Is it reasonable to take this, tear that out, so this car shouldn't go through?
Hey.
It's up to you guys. What am I, I'm just, I got my five minutes. So that's all I gotta say, okay? It's about her. She won't, I can't go out on the road with her. The car will hit her. If you let her go, boom, she's dead. Okay? That's why I'm here. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing your daughter.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Cortina?
Is this the North Shore connection?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Malcolm and then Mr. Looney, followed by Mr. Whitfield. Mr. Malcolm, you have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm also a Fairfax County resident. I live in Reston, in Polo Fields neighborhood that happens to be adjacent to the Herndon TSA. I'm speaking as an individual and I do thank you for the opportunity to address this commission. I thank Supervisor Alcorn for its task force, of which I was a member, to update the Reston Comprehensive Plan within the context of the county's overall comprehensive plan. And especially the Commissioner Carter and also county staff like St. Clair Williams on that. I provided line-in, line-out comments yesterday to the commission that are appropriate for three of the four topics I'm addressing. One, I realize, when I reread the staff amendment adjustments, I had errors. The four topics I want to address to you. One, adjacent to Polo Fields is Fairfax County Parkway eventually being expanded from four to six lanes. When it was originally built, it lacked a noise barrier or a sound wall. One of the things that is in the existing plan, both at its transportation section and the noise section, it's inadequate to address to ensure that a sound wall, noise barrier would be built when that road gets expanded. Needs to be language that enhances that likelihood occurring. The second thing is with a grade-separated interchange, though it's not in land use to address eminent domain, there is an eminent domain issue that will occur there. But related to that is a second thing that I need to address to you. In transportation, Fairfax FC dot hasn't taken advantage of everything that BDOT offers in terms of innovative intersection design. And this plan should help inform the county that there is an alternative to improving drivability, to get LOSE up, use of many roundabouts, not just in the TSA areas, but outside of the TSA areas. I gave about six locations in the document where it could be improved by at least mentioning that. Because many roundabouts improve safety, not just for vehicular traffic, but also multimodal, to increase efficiency. It provides safer speeds at the intersections because of the way they operate. You don't have left-hand turns. And also, it's, in the long run, lower cost. The third area that I wanted to address is Herndon Station. There are two things. I've addressed the Planning Commission before, one of the errors that exist in plan. I believe page 33 refers to the man-made wetland that is in the Herndon TOD area as being publicly accessible. It is not. It is on privately owned land. It's marked on all locations of the property. That is, there's no trespassing. Reference of being publicly accessible should be removed, but that wetland should be preserved and maintained. It's currently owned by Tokyo Japan LLC MTDC1, bought it in '22. It hadn't been publicly accessible legitimately since the year 2000. And Reston Association, the last had its accessibility in 2010. And Reston Association, the last had its accessibility in 2010. The last thing is also, I had language regarding design building heights when you do improvements in the 75 residential, 25% other, about being compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. With parks, recreation, and open space, what is, the comments I provided are not quite correct. Table 6, Table 7 do not align with the text in the document about the significant open spaces and that, in corridors. They need to be aligned. And also, the photo 3 is mistitled as pertaining to Sunrise Valley, where it's actually the Reston Greenway and WNOD trail that's described earlier in that. With this, I ask if you have questions to make, but I do ask you to direct the county staff to improve the plan amendment with the recommendations that I've provided you and also those from Reston Citizen Association.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mark Looney, speaking for himself, five minutes, followed by Mr. Whitfield, followed by Ms. Breehe, Breehe and, if I could ask them to be ready to go, Ms. Breehe is going to be on the phone. Mr. Looney, how are you?
Great, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Looney. I'm a land use and zoning attorney. I also happen to serve as a member of this task force, and interestingly enough, this is my third Reston task force. I was on the original TSA task force back in 2000, 2001, the four-year task force in 2010 to 2014, and then this most recent one. So I have seen every version of this report in some form or fashion over the last 22 years, I guess, at this point. I want to start off by saying I appreciate the dedication of all of the volunteers who participated in this effort. We never met in person. We only met virtually because it was through the pandemic. And so I think it actually robbed us of a chance to develop some personal relationships and have fruitful conversations around this. And some of that, I think, comes out in the tension that you hear this evening. I also appreciate the staff's position in all of this. This plan was drafted in reverse. And what I mean by that is, in other task forces on which I have served, staff held the pen, and staff listened to the task force, drafted the recommendations, took input, revised it, went back and revised it again and again. In this circumstance, they were handed a draft and encouraged to improve upon it. And that's a difficult position for them to be in. It's not the way it's normally been done in these circumstances. And so I want to commend them for taking the time to do that. And I believe it's a much better product as a result of that effort. I gave Commissioner Carter and St. Clair some comments earlier today that perhaps they can forward to the rest of the commission, but I want to highlight a couple of them. And this is reflective of sort of the history of how we got here. The first is that the plan as drafted, both by the task force and by staff, removes bonus density options for developments that go above and beyond and provide extraordinary benefits as part of their development. In the current plan, there are five or seven categories of things that developers can use to score points, to enable them to apply for and ultimately receive extra bonus, provision of off-site improvements, extra affordable housing, that sort of thing. It's stripped out of the plan at this moment. And I believe that, well, I know that there are multiple developments that have taken advantage of that already. And if it's taken out of the plan, not only do you have a question about compliance of those developments with the new plan, I think it robs you of an important tool to help secure things that otherwise might only be the minimum expectations provided. The second thing is, I'll note, Mr. Williams in his presentation talked about the affordable housing piece, but there was a little bit missing to that. Yes, it's true that at the 1.0 FAR, the affordable housing expectation is 12%, and it's similar to the countywide options. But in the Reston plan, there's a sliding scale that increases the requirement with every additional 1.0 of FAR. So at a 2.0 FAR, it's 14%. At a 3.0, it's 16%. At a 4.0, it's 18%. Yet the AMI numbers stay the same. The bonus density is the same that you get elsewhere. And by comparison in Tysons, if memory serves me correctly, the maximum WDU expectation is 13%, not 18%. And so we've set up this sort of Balkanized system countywide, where depending on where you are, location, to which transit station you are, you've got a different ADU, WDU expectation. And I think from a policy standpoint, the commission as a countywide body ought to give some considerations whether that Balkanized approach is the correct one. A third point I want to make, and this is where Ms. Cortina is probably going to shoot me.
She's not allowed to.
There's, there's a reference in the stormwater management section, which I think the staff in their redrafts did a nice job of making a bit more realistic in terms of what you can achieve, particularly in an area like Reston where there's subsurface rock underneath of the area. But there's a reference to the 100-year storm event and studying downstream flooding. And I think that language could potentially use a little tightening, because to me, what it suggests is that the expectation is that you study the 100-year storm all the way down until you find a flood, and then you rectify it from that point forward, or that point backwards, I should say. And I don't think that's the intent, because it goes well beyond what the public facilities manual would require, but I would encourage the commission and staff to work on that topic. I'll stop there and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield?
I was just going to say.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Cortina.
I wouldn't shoot you for that comment. No, I think that's consistent with the, with the PFM and with the stormwater, that there's an extent of review, and there's different places where you can, how far you look down.
Correct.
So that's certainly something to look at.
And that's, that's the comment that I made to the staff. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Whitfield, followed by Ms. Breehe, followed by Mr. Looney. Mr. Whitfield, you have 10 minutes representing the Fairfax County Taxpayer Alliance. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, this is the first time I'm meeting you here. Former Chairman Murphy was in your chair for, what, 30 years?
33.
33. Well.
And who's counting?
Thank, thank him for his many decades of service. I started watching on cable TV in 1985. I moved to Fairfax County from New York City in 1977. And my first meeting on transportation and land use was a guy named Till Hazel, speaking to the McLean Chamber of Commerce at the Evans Farm Inn in 1979. So he was my guidepost. So, over the years, and then I worked in Reston in 1977, and one of the first people I met there was Pat Kane, who was a well-known land use planner. And I learned a lot from him. And so Wheelie Avenue Bridge hadn't been built there, and a lot of, I think the only places to eat were a Chinese restaurant and McDonald's and Pizza Hut. So look how far we've come. And obviously, Town Center was built in the late 1980s and early 90s. I went, I got involved, and the late Dave Edwards was my guide in all matters Reston. So Dave did a good job. So I come at this as a former civil engineer, but in the last 30 years, I've been less civil. And so I got involved with Reston. I came here in 1994 and have lived in and around Reston since then. I was involved in the 2010, wait a minute, 2010, the first update to the comprehensive plan, and among other things, with Robert Gowdy's Town Center Committee. And I remember going to various planning charrettes and so on. And I'm a person who comes up with ideas, not always accepted by everybody, which is fine. But I can remember going to this charrette on a Saturday morning, and one of the things I came up with is the idea of an environmentally, of a high school next to the National Wildlife Federation, next to the Lake Anne, the park, the regional park. And one of the things that troubles me is what I'm seeing is, I don't think we've seen any specific proposals for educational facilities. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's at least 10 years that the school board has been mucking about looking for a high school site in western Fairfax County. I don't quite under, oh, and also, I was for 20 years a member of the Board of the Committee for Dulles, and of course, wanted to promote the development of the Dulles Airport area. And I'm perhaps most notorious from being opposed to wanting tolls on the toll road to pay for the Silver Line, because it was not the right decision. And many times, decisions have gotten made without proper consideration of their fiscal impact. And so one of my overarching concerns about all our plans in Fairfax County is their fiscal impact. And so I have no sense, from what I've seen so far, and I have to admit that I've got, still haven't read, I just started printing out stuff yesterday. I went to several meetings that Commissioner Carter had. But on transportation issues, I have to say, I feel all at sea. And I guess it's John, let's see, that was Looney. So John Looney, I guess, was in charge of the transportation issues. But I have no clear sense that what we're proposing in terms of land use activities, that the transportation network that we plan will be commensurate to what is planned. And all I can say is, we are not in isolation, because 10 miles to the east of Reston is Tysons, in which, that's actually how I met Walter Alcorn, was when he was involved in the implementation plan phase of that project. And one of the things that I well remember is, and let's say we're doubling it from whatever employment of 100,000 to 200,000 over the next 30 years, and the, and the residential will triple, but the number of cars to be generated from Tysons, many of them will use the Dulles Toll Road. And I remember going to transportation meetings in 2016 and 2017 and asking the question, well, will the intersections in Reston at Wheelie Avenue, Hunter Mill, and Town Center and the County Parkway be able to handle all this additional traffic from Tysons, as well as that generated by the additional development in Reston? My biggest concern is to get traffic in and out of Town Center as planned. And before Bob Simon died, I remember saying, the priority should be building the Town Center underpass, not the Soapstone Connector, because the Soapstone Connector would push traffic into the residential neighborhoods of South Reston. So rather, what I see the need, okay, so the people who live to the east of Reston can take the Silver Line or the toll road, and the people who live to the west from Loudoun County can either take the Silver Line or the toll road. And there won't be much growth to the north, because that's Sterling. But from the south, people as far away as Manassas, Gainesville, Woodbridge, right now, there's no transit to serve people coming from the south to Reston Town Center. And so as, as the population of Reston grows, we are going to need to provide additional capacity, highway capacity, coming up from the south. The county has played with, sorry, played is probably the wrong word, planning, south of Route 66. They started work on planning in, north of 50, in 2006, but here we are, 17 years later, I haven't seen anything. And, and so the big need will be to get the additional employment in and out of Town Center without disrupting the residential neighborhoods of South Reston. And so I don't have the answer for that, but I just expressed that concern that, oh, well, last year, Chris Wells wanted to put bike trails on both sides of Sunrise Valley. What an idiotic idea that was. And so all I'm saying is, if you're going to, and three years ago, I haven't been before the Planning Commission, at least five years, but in 2019 in July, when the Board approved three major mixed-use developments, don't remember the names, Halli Rice was one of them, I said, well, we need a comprehensive transportation demand management plan to accommodate all those projects which had been approved in 2019. I don't think anything was ever done. And now Tom Boshad, he's no longer with us. So I did ask Walter about, he, he needs to update the transportation project priorities plan for the county, and hopefully, that effort will get underway in the next couple of months. A couple of other things. One, is as a senior now, I'm very well aware of the lack of housing for seniors, and the cost of housing, of course. My suggestion would be, is in the village centers, right now, I think you're proposing a max of 20, 20 dwelling units per acre. So for senior housing, those shopping centers are ideal location to, to put additional senior housing at something like 60 dwelling units per acre or even higher, because most of those seniors do not have cars and will not be adding to the vehicular trip generation. So I haven't really put my thoughts to, I've only started to read, I had a lot of problems in trying to access this addendum yesterday, and I sent Supervisor Alcorn, but I did get to read it today. I'm very surprised at the lack of publicity for this plan, as I sent to Supervisor Alcorn. I looked in vain for articles in Reston Now, The Patch, The Connection. And so my suggestion would be, there has to be a process for better communicating with the public. And Lynn Molston, several years ago, I've lost track in time when it was, we had, one time, I guess it was Rescue Reston, there were 950 people came to South Lakes High School. So, so John Carter, Commissioner Carter, I know that might be a daunting task for you to consider, but we need some kind of public communication effort between now and the final supervisor action on this plan. And so I will submit additional comments, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. And next up is Ms. Breehe, who's by phone, has, Ms. Breehe is representing the Coalition for Smarter Growth. She has 10 minutes. And then, Mr. Looney, if you could get up front for us, and Mr. Bean. Ms. Breehe, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Nadelski, Eichner and Commissioners. My name is Sonia Breehe. I'm the Northern Virginia Advocacy Manager for the Coalition for Smarter Growth and resident of Fairfax County. CSG advocates for walkable, bikeable, inclusive, and transit-oriented communities as the most sustainable and equitable way for the DC region to grow and provide opportunities for all. This comprehensive plan study and update has been a long process. I've been impressed by the level of involvement and support of county staff who have supported the task force and helped mold the proposed language as seen in their recommendation. I'm glad to hear there are no major changes to land uses from the current comprehensive plan. Reston has the benefit of a major investment in transit with the Silver Line and should be maximizing that adjustment by focusing growth and density closest to the transit stations and creating walkable, transit-oriented communities. My comments tonight seek to address just a few parts of the overall proposed plan. First, I'd like to offer support for the affordable housing provisions. I'm glad to see provisions to update the inclusionary zoning for the Reston TSA's at 12% to be more in line with the recently updated countywide in Tysons workforce dwelling unit policy. I also appreciate the inclusion of language calling for preserving the existing market and committed affordable housing units across the whole of Reston. Providing housing for a mix of incomes near transit and jobs is essential to ensuring an inclusive and economically prosperous county in Reston, where employees are able to live near their work, helping to reduce long commutes, and contributing to a diverse and vibrant community. Next, I'd like to address the transportation language. The proposed transportation vision for Reston continues to include a multimodal system, which is critical to a walkable, transit-oriented community, and the proposed planning principles sound good, providing a complete street network, incorporating placemaking and amenities, promoting safety, health, and wellness of residents, and considering the environmental impacts of climate change and equity. But then, it reads, quote- But then, it reads, quote, "The goal in the Reston TSAs is for the proposed transportation recommendations to maximize the future use of transit biking and walking, while providing for safe and efficient automobile travel within, around, and through the TSAs and Reston as a whole." I'm struck by the fact that "safe and efficient" doesn't apply to transit bicycling and walking, our most vulnerable road users. We must make traveling by transit, walking, and biking safe and efficient if we are to maximize its use and make it a mode of choice if we're ever going to reduce single occupancy driving and truly make our TSAs vibrant, walkable communities. In fact, the way the goal reads would aim to dissect these communities closest to our transit stations with wide, high-speed roads like Sunset Hills Road—excuse me, Sunset Hills Road, right at the foot of the Reston Town Center Metro Station, which has already happened. So I urge you to rethink the phrasing of this goal. The proposed amendment goes on to list metrics for street performance, and again, overemphasizes vehicle travel in those metrics. A complete street should incorporate metrics for all modes to ensure it is safe and convenient for all users. So, to be clear, LOS, or Level of Service, is a measure for how an intersection performs for drivers. A better LOS grade means cars are free-flowing, traveling at faster speeds, which at the same time makes it less safe for people walking and biking. There's less time for them to cross, and they are forced to be near drivers traveling at higher and less safe speeds. In more urban environments, or places with higher pedestrian activity, it's actually safer and more comfortable for the LOS to be lower. So I'm glad to see staff's recommendations to maintain options for not meeting LOSE. This is needed to ensure the roads in the TSAs are safe and comfortable for people walking and biking, and needed—it's needed to create those walkable, transit-oriented communities. And while it's noted that other metrics should be used to—to measure performance of other modes, no specific suggestions are made like—that of the LOS for vehicles. So for the West Falls Church Metro and Huntington Metro Stations, they both had active transportation studies. They utilize metrics for pedestrian and cyclists, and I think these could be incorporated into the proposed language for Reston. So these included pedestrian level of comfort. This is a scoring of pedestrian pathways and crossings based on the different factors that contribute to or detract from pedestrian comfort. This could be the, you know, posted speed limit on the adjacent roadway, presence of bike lanes, sidewalk width, and other factors. Another measure they use is bicycle level of traffic stress. This includes ratings, and the Bicycle Master Plan for—a map for the county utilizes these. So, this includes ratings for bicycle routes based on the level of stress that bicyclists may experience for roadway segments. The roads at the intersections, which often balloon with turning lanes, and they become much wider, and as well as unsignalized crossings. I would also suggest considering the use of crash history and VDOT's Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, which identifies high-risk roads in need of pedestrian safety improvement. Additionally, there are several road widens listed in the proposed plan amendment. At a time when we're facing a climate crisis and we continue to be strangled with congestion, road widening only serves to encourage more people to drive. It's induced demand. When roads are widened, it encourages more people to drive because suddenly, it's more convenient, but those roads quickly fill back up with traffic, and then there's demand again for more widening. These widening also undermine the safety and comfort for people walking and biking, causing longer crossing distance and higher speeds. Road widening is counterproductive to the goals of maximizing transit, walking, and biking. I urge you to reconsider all road widening in the proposed plan. With so many laudable goals in the plan, I encourage more to be done to prioritize transit, walking, and biking, and reducing single occupancy driving. This would better support the transportation principles laid out for safety, health, and wellness of residents, and the consideration of the environmental impacts of climate change and equity. I appreciate your considerations of my comments. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. John Mooney, who's speaking for himself. Mr. Mooney, you have five minutes. And then, finally, on our listed speakers, Christopher Bean. If you would be ready to come up, Mr. Bean, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Mooney, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Carter, and other Commissioners. My name is John Mooney. I'm a Fairfax resident living in Reston, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify tonight. During the Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, I was Reston Association's representative on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force, and served as the Chair of the Transportation Working Group. However, my testimony tonight will focus on three personal concerns that I have about the Transportation Chapter of the proposed draft. All three concern the proposed grid of streets in the TSAs. And I submitted a written version, which has a few more details for the Commission members. I have two concerns about the Reston Town Center TSA grid map, as found on page 83 of the staff draft. The first is the depiction of American Dreamway on the former Fannie Mae property between Sunset Hills and Old Reston Avenue as a public-use street. I personally recommend against the depiction of American Dreamway as a public-use street for the following reasons. It was opposed by many neighbors, who fear it would create disruptive traffic through the surrounding neighborhoods, and also by the Reston Association Board of Directors in a letter to Supervisor Alcorn on April 4, 2022. Secondly, it is inconsistent, at least at the present, with the property redevelopers' desire to maintain the security gates in case new tenants want them. Thirdly, it's inconsistent with the Planning Commission's June 29, 2022 recommendation, and the Board of Supervisors' August 2, 2022 decision not to remove—not to require removal of the security gates. Fourthly, it would cause heavy traffic impacts on Old Reston Avenue, a scenic Virginia byway. Fifth, VDOT had earlier rejected making American Dreamway a public road, in part because the bridge did not meet VDOT specs. And finally, this decision doesn't have to be made now, but could be deferred to a later review of the Comprehensive Plan in further succeeding years. My second concern is with the proposed new connection between American Dreamway and Northshore Drive, which has been commented on by others, so I will be quick here. My concerns include all the problems I just listed for American Dreamway, because that would become part of this corridor. Secondly, it would require taking property from nearby clusters. Thirdly, it would create a geometrically dangerous new intersection linking a 90-degree curve on American Dreamway with a 130-degree curve on Northshore Drive, and all of this immediately adjacent to a pedestrian crossing. Fourthly, it would greatly increase traffic on Northshore Drive due to traffic from the recently approved townhouses and existing office buildings, and also from Sunset Hills Road. This would likely increase pedestrian, cyclist, and vehicular issues on Northshore Drive, and eventually create pressure for its widening. My third concern is with the Wheelie TSA grid map. Specifically, staff's proposed change in the alignment of Association Drive, shown on page 82, and with an accompanying reference note to page 19, the Land Use Chapter's discussion of Association Drive. These staff changes run counter to the task force's clear recommendation to avoid, to the maximum extent possible, any grid streets that require the destruction of heritage buildings or significant existing trees in this area. In the summer of 2022, Fairfax County DOT, Commissioner Carter, and the Transportation Drafting Committee had agreed to depict the conceptual east-west street as clearly avoiding these buildings and trees. The new staff depiction shows a passing through the most sensitive areas. Moreover, the referenced Land Use Chapter's new language on Association Drive concludes with a rather weak recommendation that the east-west street, quote, "consider tree areas and existing buildings slated to remain, and should consider impacts to tree areas and buildings on adjacent parcels," end quote. Mere consideration is far too weak. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, our final listed speaker is Mr. Christopher Bean, who's speaking for himself. Mr. Bean, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Christopher Bean, and Northshore Cluster Association resident. I am opposed to the proposal for a vehicular road between Sunset Hills and Northshore via the American Dreamway. In my review of public comments, I'll paraphrase the following submissions, though there are many more, Public Comment 91. The wheelie grid of—the wheelie grid of streets should not include a road between Sunset Hills Road and Northshore Drive via American Dreamway. This road would create a dangerous pedestrian condition and severely impact the stability of Northshore Drive neighborhoods, Public Comment 117. And I strongly oppose the continuation of American Dreamway to Northshore Drive, where I live. This residential road is used by many cyclists and pedestrians. It would be highly unsuitable and dangerous for Northshore Drive to become a thoroughfare connecting very busy Sunset Hills Drives, as it does with Wheelie Avenue and Reston Parkway. There should be little doubt that drivers will use it as a cut-through. I must agree, an intersection from Sunset Hills to Northshore presents many perils. I invite you to visit this location, and see the majestic and mature sycamore trees that will be removed if a vehicular road is approved. Furthermore, in my review, I did not read even one public comment in support of the proposal. And I have not read one advantage in favor of the proposal. Please oppose a vehicular road connecting Sunset Hills to Northshore via American Dreamway. Instead, let's build and maintain a safe, multi-use paved access to enter the WNOD from the American Dreamway eastern overpass side. Fairfax City will save the road construction and roundabout costs, and Reston can continue its commitment to attracting residents who are seeking life with green space. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a—Mr. Bean is our last listed speaker. We do have the opportunity for anyone else to address us with a three-minute comment. Is there anyone in the auditorium that would like to address the Commission? Yes, sir, calling down. If you would indicate your name and your address, please. And when you're finished with your statement, please go over to—the clerk and give that information to her as well. Okay? Welcome.
I'm Jim Reed, Oak Park, Reston Town Center. Anyone the real address, or just the condo complex?
Address is good.
Address, 12004 Taliesin Place, Reston.
Okay, welcome.
Okay. I'm here to have my experience of moving to Reston to have a car-free life. That was my dream. I—I've been—I'm a flight attendant, and I base at Dulles, and was car-free for 25 years. Lived in Boston, Montreal, DC, Arlington, Herndon, and then I said, oh, I could buy a condo in Reston Town Center and have a full, car-free life. I bought a car a year and a half ago. It's—it's like—I—it's—I fought and fought and fought, but Town Center—it's —it's a beautiful place to eat a Chipotle burrito. That's pretty much all it is. It's a fairground, unfortunately. If they would have made it like Mosaic—Mosaic is a much more complete place for human beings to live. You got grocery store, you got everything, gym with pool and all this stuff. Also, just the Dunloring Metro Station, the inter—the connection between Dunloring and the Metro, that's beautiful. It feels like a town. It feels like I'm almost in Europe. Actually, German—Germany's has the best towns, I think. They—everything—you go downtown, and everything you need is there. You don't just have Chipotle in a bunch of overpriced restaurants, and some purse stores. So I—it's like—because that's a Boston Properties thing, I think. I don't know if that's here, but—I would love to have—so, I had to buy a car, because everything that you need to live is on these hostile streets—Barron Cameron, Eldon, Fairfax County Parkway, that Sunset Hills. And so it's like—it—it's these big, ugly parking lots everywhere. So, you know, they say, oh, well, Trader Joe's is in Town Center. It's not. You have to walk down these horrible streets and get across that Barron Cameron to get to Trader Joe's. So somehow, if there's some way to put everything on Eldon Street, in Reston Town Center, and somehow integrate it to the metro without having to cross that horrible Sunset Valley Road, Sunset Hills—it changes the name of one of those roads, please, Sunset—Sunrise. That's—it's like, oh, it drives me crazy. And I would love to have a way to get by bike from Sunset Hills to Lake End without having to go on Wheelie. Um, what else? There must have been something else. Oh, the metro. I'd love trains. I do everything—I'd love the 950 bus, I'd—but the metro—I've only used it once to go to work, because it closes at 10:30 at night. The last train from the airport into town is 10:30 at night. I can't use it. I get in at midnight, I get in at 11:00, I get in at 1:00 in the morning, as a flight attendant. I would love to be able to use that thing all the time. Plus, it's a 19-minute walk from Town Center. So it's somehow—the integration—it's got so much potential. But I turned 60, I have to find a German to marry, and move to a place that's already good for carless life, because I don't think it's going to happen in my lifetime here. But thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to be here and to speak to us. Is there anyone else in the auditorium who would like to address the Commission? Please come down, sir, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes, and then after you finish, if you'd sign up over at the clerk, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. So, my name's Greg Ackerman. I actually live in on 103 North 29th Street in Richmond. I represent the Baltimore DC Metro Building Trades. Most of my members have to wake up in a few hours to—to go to work, so appreciate the opportunity to—to be here and address the Commission about the Reston Comprehensive Plan. I serve as President of the DC Metro Building Trades Unions. We have about 26,000 members in the region, including over 5,000 in Fairfax County. And as many of you know, this is a regional market, and our members go to work where the work is. You know, as a result, they often work on projects that prioritize high-quality workforce development opportunities, including apprenticeship training that assures workers are able to get a career and—and not just a job. Unfortunately, trends in the market mean that private development, such as the type facilitated by the—the Reston Comprehensive Plan, does not always facilitate high-quality workforce development opportunities. And instead, construction contractors are able to bring in out-of-area labor without concern for the ethos of equity and inclusion that's embodied by the rest of the provisions of—the Comprehensive Plan. So we urge you, as a result, to include workforce development criteria in the Reston Comprehensive Plan, because we need to ensure that one job is an opportunity to upskill and earn more in the next job for local residents. Without such provisions, our region risks worsening our workforce pipeline and exacerbating our skilled labor shortage. We need to tackle our affordability crisis by not just promoting affordable housing and reliable transportation networks and community health, but we also need to facilitate high-quality workforce development for local residents. And the way to do that is by including workforce criteria in this Comprehensive Plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Commission this evening, who's in the auditorium? Sir, are you planning to speak to us, coming down?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Very good. Well, come down, introduce yourself, your name and address, please. Once you're finished, if you could sign up at the clerks—with the clerk, I'd appreciate it. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. It won't take that long. My name is Lou Spencer. I'm the Assistant Business Manager of UA Local 5 Plumbers and Gas Fitters. I'm one of Greg's affiliates. I just want to repeat everything that Greg said. I'm also Secretary-Treasurer of the Virginia Building and Construction Trades Council statewide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Planning Commissioners. Please consider, in your Comprehensive Plan, responsible contractor language to combat wage theft and worker misclassification, and also consider registered apprenticeship and prevailing wage language to promote local hiring and workforce development. Strong labor protections will permit Fairfax residents to live and thrive in Reston, Virginia, in Fairfax County. And let us know what we can do to help you as you move forward. If you can dream it, we can build it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would remind you that—and your colleague—that if you have specific—anything that you can provide us in writing will help ensure it gets full consideration.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium? Is there anyone on the phone to speak to us?
Danielle George, Planning Commission staff. We have one caller on the line, Tammy Petreen.
Ms. Petreen, welcome. Ms. Patraine, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tammy Patraine, and I was a task force member and lead for three chapters and worked on four others. My address is 2503 Foxcroft Way in Reston. Many of you know that I speak plain English and am blunt. While most staffers helped task force work, others delayed progress, especially in the last year. I am sorry to say that our chief opponent seemed to be Chief Staffer Chris Caperton, who eliminated a much-needed table of contents for the Reston Master Plan, as well as informative photos and other graphics, and even denied us a more readable font. I found that very sad. Then yet, just yesterday, while some very good known edits were included, more unvetted surprise edits to the plan were made public, leaving no time to rebut or change the text. Staffer Caperton's latest point is that --
Ma'am, ma'am, let me just interject here one minute, please. Our culture here is that we don't name people, we don't put, we don't point fingers, we simply give your best advice, and that's what we --
Okay.
Welcome your best advice.
Thank you. We, there is one, while there were this new addition yesterday afternoon was a complete surprise and included some good known edits that we had requested, but also included some very surprise edits that we did not request. And these, there was text that was changed that had been in the plan from the beginning. So I don't know why, all of a sudden, these were changed one day before this hearing. Specifically, one issue of huge concern is the addendum text on pages 13 and 14 of yesterday's shocking info drop regarding Block 9 of Reston Town Center North, which contains 30 beautiful Section 8 three-bedroom townhouses on a small, environmentally sensitive site. This attractive cluster was to remain in our vetted text, but the new text insists intent that it, these well-built three-bedroom townhouses will be replaced by a large building aggregating hundreds of low-income housing dwelling units in small-size units. This is outrageous. The current residents of Bowman Town Court are Restonians, our neighbors whom we cherish. Indeed, there are several other more suitable Reston areas on which to aggregate low-income housing if that model is deemed wise. I, for one, and as a former Illinois State Welfare Investigator at Cabrini-Green in Chicago, do not think aggregating poor folks is at all wise. One developer who previously offered to do this dirty deed withdrew due to huge problems. No joke.
Ma'am, ma'am, you've --
Does the county learn nothing from this debacle?
Ma'am, you're --
Further, the value of --
Ma'am, please finish.
-- Inova's property at Reston Town Center North will degrade if this berserk plan is activated.
Ma'am.
None of this makes any sense.
Ma'am, would you please finish?
Nor do other Reston Town Center North neighbors approve. In addition, this is Reston Association covenant of property, and they have not been consulted. Thank you, and I hope that this --
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else on the line?
We have no additional callers.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to take a 10-minute break. I want to thank all of you who have spoken this evening, took your time to be here or to speak on the phone. You're certainly welcome. We'd love to have you stay and listen to our conversation, but I did want to make sure that you knew how much we appreciated your efforts to give us your insights. And we'll be back in 10, five minutes till 10, five minutes till 10.
Well, we're back. Thank you for your patience. We are now commissioners in a position to, first of all, listen to if Mr. Williams has any commentary with regard to the testimony that has been received, and then I'll invite the commissioners to ask questions or offer comments. Mr. Williams, any comments with regard to testimony that you've heard?
I think at this time, you know, staff is kind of valuing to be taking in all the comments and kind of looking at appropriate responses, but I think we want to give opportunity for the planning commission to ask any questions, and we can respond to those.
Uh-huh. Okay. Is there anything, commissioners, that you would like to discuss based on what you've heard or based on your prior reading of the plan? And I have Mr. Jimenez.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the speakers who came out today. It's always great to see such great public participation. I'd like to especially thank Emily Klein-Gibson with Sierra Club. Her comments were spot-on. We need to be doing better. We need to be moving faster, and the status quo or the bare minimum isn't going to get us where we need to be when it comes to environmental protection and energy efficiency. I'd like to also quickly read a statement that I've prepared, kind of piggybacking off the comments from Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Spencer, who were talking about workforce development. Development should benefit communities, and that cannot happen without promoting workforce development. We must encourage and move forward with language at all comprehensive plans to encourage developers to facilitate strong workforce and training programs to benefit our local communities. The practical effects of this omission are the creation of low-paying jobs with minimal earning potential for our most vulnerable residents. Instead, we need to reorient our thinking to promote free Earn As You Learn training so that we are preparing our marginalized communities and young people for not just a job, but for a career. If we want to promote equity in Fairfax County, we need to be creative and approach fixing the issues of systemic inequality from multiple angles. That means focusing not only on housing and community health, but also on sustainable jobs and careers for struggling communities. We don't achieve that without truly investing in workforce developments, and the onus needs to be shared between investments made by the county and investments made by developers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter, do you have anything? And then Commissioner Cortina?
We're going to be working hard in the next couple of weeks. I have taken good notes. I have lots of written testimony here. Basically, what I hope to do when we come back is to have a, and I've mentioned this before, a four-column format. One is the chapter. Two is what the community requested, staff response, and then a chance for our decision. So I'll be going through all the testimony with the staff, and we'll produce that document. That'll allow us to clearly move through the testimony. I don't know that I have anything. It's unusual. I will comment on the workforce development. We actually did a project not too long ago in Reston. It was a hotel in Lake Fairfax Park, and they were kind of in the middle of it, and this notion of a grid of streets kind of didn't affect it. We can save trees, I guess, but it didn't seem to fit our normal way that we approach things. So we used this technique, which I'm sure could use additional information, of supporting internships and those kinds of features for people entering the workforce to actually work in the hotel at a variety of positions. So it's not impossible to do this. It's a little outside of our normal, but as Commissioner Jimenez said, why not try some of these more creative things? So that's all I have to say at this point, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cortina and other commissioners, Commissioner Olafelder.
Thank you, Chairman. I would definitely like to align myself with the comments of Commissioner Jimenez. Those are good points, and I can support those. I already made the mention about the heritage resources, and I did hear a couple of people mention that as well. On the environment, I think this chapter is so much better, and it's well-structured. It's easy to understand. I did have a question about the lead expectation and why that couldn't be different in different areas, just like workforce housing is different in different areas, or as the FAR increases to increase the expectations if there are carrots and sticks? Perhaps the staff could respond to that.
Yeah, commissioners, this is Joe Gorney from the Department of Planning and Development, Planning Division. The green building policies for Fairfax County are contained within the policy plan, so those have been uniformly applied across the county. There are special call-outs for those TSAs and suburban centers and whatnot, but in general, we have one place to park those policies. And there are considerations and encouragement in particular areas, but there is not necessarily a more robust expectation within the Reston Plan as it's written currently, as it's drafted, to go above and beyond those policy plan policies. We do expect, the Board of Supervisors has authorized a plan amendment for the policy plan. One of the very first elements for that plan amendment is the environment section. So we do plan to take a very hard look at the green building, and we'll reach out to the community, we'll reach out to industry, we will look at what we do as a county to figure out where to go with green building. So between green building, I've heard electric vehicle charging, those are all things that are on the table. We definitely welcome that discussion. We, at this point, as staff, feel that it would continue to be applied countywide, perhaps again with special call-outs, whether it's Reston, Tysons, Lincolnia, you name it, Franconia or whatnot. But that's how we, as staff, would expect to address that, because once we start with Reston, then we'd have to go to every other activity center in the county, and we'd prefer to have it in one spot.
Okay. So you'll have a chance, then, to link it back to the CCAP and the greenhouse gas reductions that the board has approved in some future plan? I mean, the board would have to approve that they, you know, want a stricter standard?
Absolutely. There are various, unlike the Reston Plan, the policy plan amendment, we expect to go, and it already has far more topical areas under the environment element today than the Reston Plan covers under environmental stewardship, and we expect to see that as we go forward with that review.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of other quick ones here. This is just a minor thing, but I cannot make heads or tails of that bicycle map. I can't see what's underlying it. It's, I don't know if it was intentionally fuzzy, like you're not sure where exactly the trail is going to go, but I can't find the cycle track purple. To me, it's just completely unreadable. So I did send a copy of a neighboring locality's plan, which is very similar, but it's just clear, and I would hope that we could swap out the graphics anytime that they look fuzzy. And then my last question, you know, actually, that's not my last question, but the parking management figures that are specifically in the text, I find that interesting, and I'm wondering why you would do that there as opposed to how we're handling it elsewhere? So that's page 86. Is there anybody that might respond to that, or is that something you want to take back to look at?
I think that's something we can take back to coordinate with our FCDOT staff and see if any changes are needed there.
Okay. And...
Were you looking for changes or just clarification?
Yeah, I mean, it is unusual to have parking rates specified in a comp plan, I think. And then there was a contradictory sentence on page 139 that talks about having more access and availability to central Reston, including availability of parking, which I think contradicted the other language. So that is just a question, page 86, 189. And two, I think there was also a staff, I mean, a resident that asked about the 20-DU acre maximum, and I understand that this is very sensitive area. I was here during the yellow shirts, which went from edge to edge, sea to sea, about the density, but if you do 20-DU in a village center, then you're encouraging the townhouse style, I think. And I would think that this would be higher, higher density, and have you considered the senior housing or changing the density so that it's more vertical?
So the 13 to 20 dwelling acre, that is consistent with the existing density in the village centers where there are multifamily buildings?
And it's 20 to 30, you're saying, not 20?
Thirteen to 20.
Oh, 13, okay.
Yes. And that does allow for the potential for multifamily?
That is consistent with the multifamily. It seems like a low, low-density.
Again, it's consistent with the existing density in the village centers, so...
Mr. Mailand, did you want to chip in?
Let me just clarify on village centers. The conference, the village centers has a residential portion and a non-residential portion of the village center. The plan recommends the residential portion be as-is, no redevelopment. The current conference of plan has language for redevelopment of a village center in the non-residential portion. That was changed, or proposed to be changed, by a task force, and the staff report where there's no redevelopment for no new residential units in a non-residential area without a conference of plan amendment, and that conference of plan amendment is capped at 20 dwellings per acre. So what the proposal language is to add residential units in the non-residential portion of the village center, it needs a plan amendment and no more than 20 dwellings per acre as part of that plan amendment.
And is the 20-DUs per acre...
It'd be a multifamily, it's medium density.
Like a four-story or five-story?
Correct, right. Four-story.
Mr. Carter?
Could I clear that up?
Please.
Commissioner Carter, just, it's specific to that question?
Yeah, this is a density higher than Lake Anne, which has a 15-story building, so the 13 to 20 is not dictating the height of the buildings in the future. So Lake Anne has a 15-story, but less than 20 units per acre.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I did have a question about the task force that's working on Reston North, and if they will be following this plan, or is there some other plan change? How will those be synchronized?
So there is the ongoing RTC North Task Force. They're going to come up with their own recommendations for RTC North, and it will be after the rest of the conference of plan is, whatever is adopted, and they will be evaluating that as part of, you know, when they make their final recommendations.
So everything that is proposed in there right now has the possibility of being something different after they finish their work, and then it would be another comp plan change?
Well, that's part of the reason why, I think there was a question raised earlier, why square footage was taken out of the RTC North area, and again, it was because of, there is another task force that's looking at that. So again, they're going to make the final recommendations for those civic uses in RTC North.
Wow. Maybe I'll answer that one, too.
Do you mind?
No, I don't mind at all.
Commissioner Carter?
The task force, their charge is to locate the civic uses on the blocks, not to create a new plan. I don't think, their primary charge is to figure out where the library goes and where the recreation centers within the envelope that this plan already proposes.
That's something to clarify.
Yeah.
That's something to clarify, for sure. And let's see, I have, I'm sorry for, oh, the park, the urban spaces, to me, this is more of a concept issue than it is any specific language, but in there, it says that the park urban spaces, that they need to be treated as parks and not as secondary uses. And I think what this means is that sometimes they will count, like, part of a sidewalk and say, oh, this is a linear park or something like that, but I'm not really sure, and I feel like this could use some more clarity, because this happens so often, and then we have a hardscape urban park that is all hard concrete terraces, you know, a couple of benches on the side of a six-lane road. That's not an urban park. So I think just saying secondary uses doesn't quite give enough guidance. And lastly, this is my last one. On page 120, I'm not sure that you intended this, but I'll just ask the question. It says that the repurposing or adaptive reuse of commercial for affordable housing should be done in the TSAs. Are you saying that it should only be in the TSAs? Or you're just saying that that is a prime place for adaptive reuse? Because the way it reads is that that is where affordable housing that's adaptive reuse should be, is only in the TSAs, which is contrary to what it says elsewhere.
Yeah, no. Sorry. Yeah, the intention is not to say that it would only be in the TSAs. I think it's just highlighting that that is something that is encouraged in the TSAs, but I think we can take a look at...
Yeah, just take a look at that. I think that's just a simple wording. And I'll be happy to put my comments in writing if that will help you. And I do have a couple of other typos, but I'm not going to mention them here. Maybe one or two. Thank you. And overall, I just want to say, from where this was with the entire community up in arms, we have come a very long way, and when you read this just cover to cover, I feel like you really do get a sense of Reston, and not just old Reston and TSA Reston, but Reston overall. And I hope that the TSAs will have the same feel. I mean, they're different. They're high-density, they're innovative, they're really cool when you see them, but they also need to incorporate the ethos of Reston, and I, you know, I really hope that this comprehensive plan does that for the properties moving forward and that they incorporate all the great things that make Reston great. And I feel like this is the right step in the right direction, but I did appreciate some of the comments that came out today as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Olafelder, and then Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've come a long way with this plan, and we still have some wood to chop. And I appreciate the testimonies this evening. I think it's illustrative of how we're at a stage where people can really take a look at what we're specifically proposing, and they can come in and say, I think this, I think that, I think that's not enough, I think that's too much, or this shouldn't be there. I suspect some of it is that we deviated some from the task force's original report, and we're seeing some comments that are based on that fact. But what would be most helpful to me, I think, is during this deferral period and before we make a decision, is sort of just a list of what some of the comments were, and I think, I think many of them may have been discussed and addressed earlier in the process, and we ended up with the version that's here tonight. But to talk about the comments and for, to show what kind of response, I mean, we already considered this, and we didn't do it for this reason, or is, it's, we think this is a good comment, and we can, and we're going to make, we're making a change in, you know, we're going to propose a change before we vote on that aspect. That would be helpful to me in terms of what I need to see before I vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm amazed you don't yet have a branch office in Reston. You spent a tremendous amount of time, to your credit, working on this and then the RTC as well, so kudos for the continuing efforts. I have some questions. It does not signal an opinion either way. I'm just wondering how the questions might be answered or what the background would be. And one is on the, in other words, where would the foundation come for a response? One was the issue of the Reston Association and maintaining the parcels of land versus not keeping it under Park Authority or whatever. What I'm asking is what kind of, I don't know if that's something you would put in a part, in a comp plan as opposed to something that might require more of an authority, such as boards, board of supervisors, to make that kind of decision? How does that work? I ask because there's an expectation that somehow that will be included either way in this plan, and that gets tricky if it's an authority beyond what surpasses for comp plan.
I think that's something, again, we heard the comment, and we'll have to coordinate with our Park Authority staff on that, just to be clear on the language and, you know, what the intent of that language was.
That almost seems like something the county attorney's office might have to weigh in on. I don't know. I'm not an attorney, I have no idea, but it seems like, that's a turkey one. That's beyond just comp plan recommendations. So the, this same thing kind of struck me with the issue of not using storm waters, and I'm kind of paraphrasing here, not using storm waters to create, for density credits. It could, once again, is that something is strictly more comp plan oriented, or is it something that requires more legal authority or whatever? I'm just curious how that one is addressed. I'm just curious how that one is addressed. I mean, apart from just good practices from, from planning perspective, but also, how would that be decided or not decided?
Yeah, I mean, that's something, I would definitely take some internal discussions on what would be, to me, that's, that would be outside of just the Reston Comprehensive Plan, but we'll have to have the internal discussions to, to, to get a better idea on that.
I bring those up because as important as they were to those testifying, I wanted to make sure they understand this. It may or may not be something we automatically reference in a comp plan, so, thank you very much.
Yes, Commissioner Spain?
Thank you, Chairman. I just have one comment. I, I was struck, I was touched by the testimony of the father and his young daughter, and the safety concerns. We are trying to create an environment that is walkable, safe, you know, easy to ride your bikes. But, but sometimes we forget about the, the youth, the young people, and how some of these changes might affect them. So I'm particularly interested in how you will address that Sunset, Sunset Hills, and what is it, North Shore Drive concern? Because that does seem to be an issue that was a major concern with the community. So I'd like to know how that's gonna be addressed.
So, yeah, I mean, and that's, again, a comment we've heard from others, so I think, I think staff, we're definitely hearing it. Again, that's something we will be coordinating with our Fairfax County Department of Transportation staff.
Hi, John, John King, Transportation Planner, Fairfax County Department of Transportation. Yet certainly very compelling testimony from the community, and certainly understand their concerns. I think generally, we supported the task force's recommendation to add connectivity, I think in this area, that was our thought. Better connect the local street network with the TSA area and things like that. So certainly that, any road or connection that would be built would need a lot of additional evaluation and consideration. So at this stage, we look to add more connectivity in an area where adding a lot of people and places generally to try and help balance out that load that the transportation network would have to carry. So, it's a very brief response, I know, but just wanted to address your, your question.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone else? Let me do a quick follow-up on that. So American Way was given considerable deliberation in one of the recent, perhaps a year ago, rezoning. And one of the recommendations, or one of the outcomes of that was our recommendation to the board that because the applicant made the case that there was a security requirement to optimize his ability to market that, that building, that would, that precluded having American Way be open. What, in, in terms of the including, including opening American Way as part of a, a street grid, if you will, you're, you're looking prospectively longer term? Is that the, so you're not looking at the board's decision to keep American Way closed as the determinant of whether it will forever stay closed?
This is Mike Garcia, Fairfax County DOT. So, no, the recommendation does not conflict with what the board and the planning commission has recommended. The portion of American Dreamway that is the private section is a north-south piece, just south of where the
Yeah.
connection is that we've put in there. It is a long-term connection, it's meant to kind of be part of the whole Reston community, part of the whole Reston network. If redevelopment occurs, and the need is foreseen that it needs to be there. So it is a north, it is an east-west connection, so it does not actually preclude anything in terms of, it doesn't have to be a public or private street, we can kind of work to see how that works. Again, this is a long-term connection that we put in there in the plan to kind of address what we see to be as a east-west movement, and the need to kind of provide the local residents on North Shore access to get to Reston Town Center and vice versa. So, and allow the regional traffic to kind of stay on Sunset Hills Road, which is a road further south.
I'll be interested in how Commissioner Carter and, and Works with Staff on, on how to position that, if, if any changes are warranted in your view. But I, I do think the, for, for my perspective, it's, it's worth considering seriously the testimony that we've heard this evening. I wanted to, for my, for my part, in terms of what, what the commission, I've heard from the commission this evening, I just want to align myself with the comments that have been made, both the comments made and also the questions that have been raised. I do, and reiterate my personal belief that the testimony that's been given this evening by the community has warrants solid consideration, and it was thoughtful, I think, speaking, or addressing Commissioner Rolfelder's point. This process has gotten us to the point where that very specific set of recommendations can be made by the community, and it's a little bit unusual in that respect, but it's because of the length of time that we've gone through to get to this point, and, and the kind of level of effort by both the task force level and now, yes, certainly here. So, kudos to everybody, but, but alignment with the, my alignment of thinking with what my colleagues have said. Wanted to raise one last question, and I'm gonna see some eyes roll at this, but there has been a concerted effort for months now to promote a different approach to the aesthetic of the comp plan, the use of graphics, use of photos attributed within the narrative itself. Figure one represents this, table one represents this, graphic this, that. This is, there's a dearth of what I understood was a commitment to have that type of aesthetic to this version of the draft plan. So I, I'm concerned about that, and I just want to put that on, out there for you. You don't have to respond to it this evening, but I, I personally have had a number of conversations about this that I feel like those commitments are not fully realized as yet, there's time to do so, and I look forward to the opportunity to, to review the next iterations that, or fully capture what I understood to be the commitments. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing else, I need to close the public hearing? Oh.
So, we're gonna close it, but leave it open for the written comments?
Yes, we have, we have to have a motion. We have to have a motion.
Yes, yes, yes.
So.
Okay, well, I will throw in one last thing, then. On this topic of roads and the road widenings, and, you know, the person that just, you know, the last speaker about the hostile roads, I think the descriptions of the roads in there about being tree-lined, et cetera, I think those are good, but we can't lose sight of the importance of the pedestrian in Reston. And it is interesting, on page 78, it says, minor arterial roadway widenings. Additional vehicle lanes should not be added to the minor arterial roadways within the TSAs. And then further down, you've got the Reston Parkway within the TSA being widened. Now, that is not a minor road, I don't believe that's a minor arterial type A. It's very confusing to me how we talk about the things that we want to do, but then all of the transportation actions are for widening. And I would just go back to the testimony that, that we heard. And I know it's a balancing act, because we have a situation where people say, well, we, I can't get from one side of Reston to the other, it's so difficult. And then, so you add more traffic lights in order to improve the level of service and numbers, perhaps. You know, you're trying to satisfy all of these different issues. And so trying to understand where it's most important to add the capacity, and where it's most important to slow the capacity, and what you're trying to achieve, I feel there's, I still see a bit of a mismatch with, with the road network and with the goals of Reston. And I, I just don't know exactly what you're doing about that. I would have to, just one final comment on this. I would be so thrilled to have these descriptions of arterial roads on every arterial road in the county. Route 50, Braddock Road, to be able to put trees and sidewalks and benches, that would be revolutionary. And I'm not sure why we in Braddock District can't have that, too. Braddock Road won't necessarily have the ability to put trees on the side of it, because they go so fast, and it's a danger. So, so I, I understand that Reston is actually quite different from the rest of the county in this. But, but I think we need to go a little bit further and really scrutinize these road widenings. And you can respond to that.
Do you want me, I, so, I hear what you're saying. The grid of streets is meant to prevent a lot of that road widening, but could have already been there from occurring. So there are three parts, three roads in the, in Reston, from the comprehensive plan, that have a widening on them. One is Sunset Hills, from Reston Parkway to Wheelie Avenue, it's got a six-lane recommendation. The other one is Reston Parkway, south of Sunrise Valley Drive, and the other one is Fairfax County Parkway, so a, basically a freeway for the most part. The rest of the roads are really more just kind of grid connections that are meant to provide local traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists, a chance to kind of be on localized, more calming roads that are meant to provide, be more people-first type roads, that's kind of the intent of the grid. So from that perspective, we are trying to look at ways to kind of harmonize Reston in terms of really promoting the people. If you look at the way that we do implementation, that's actually still in the plan, is to look at putting connections in first that kind of provide more direct connections, hence why you see kind of us advocating for connections to occur. Only lastly, do we really try to add turn lanes, or do we try to even do a widening? So we have prescriptive, well, planned prescriptive guidance in terms of how we go about trying to implement the transportation network.
I did see that text, and I did appreciate it. I'm not sure that every place where it mentions Reston Parkway or Sun, Sunrise, Sunset.
Sunset.
Sunset. You know, that, that's, that's particularly clear. And I think as the speaker mentioned, when you have six-lane road that you have to cross in order to get to the metro, it's, you know, it defeats the purpose. Thank you.
Commissioner Sargent, and then Commissioner Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one, one comment on visualization, illustrations within the plan. I know it's, it's tough, because you don't want to cement that image forever. You don't want to create an image that doesn't have the flexibility to create your vision, if, if it has to be altered as the plan goes forward, I, I understand that. I'm wondering if in some cases, we cannot use examples. And by that, I mean, you know, arterial roadways with, we use simple ones now, and we used them for Tysons quite a bit. You know, the, the visualized roadways and things like that, and I'm wondering if some element of that design could be, could not be useful here, because this is fairly complex and difficult to envision at all. But perhaps, within, you know, as we talk about illustrations, and we don't want to create one monolithic vision of the future, because it's always gonna change, but examples could be placed within, within the, the whole comprehensive plan in the back or someplace to, to help understand what is meant by particular arterials or other visions of development, so that you have the flexibility to use. And that's probably not what Commissioner Carter was looking for, but I do, at least in some way endorse, you know, certainly some kind of visualization, because this is a complex project you're working on, and it's difficult to truly, truly visualize it in your mind and, and give it justice that it deserves. Just two, my two cents.
And let me piggyback on that. I, I use the word aesthetic in referencing this. It's really accessibility and ease of access from the non-experienced public to this, to a document that's as important as this, this document is. That's the, really the focus of, of these types of additions. Commissioner Carter?
Yes, no rest for the worry, the weary on this. There are a couple issues that might be difficult to resolve. One is this relationship of RA to people that, relationship to RA for people that, for projects that are within the TSAs, which are now part, part of the covenant. We need to work on that. I'm not sure we can resolve that in the comp plan, probably not. But we should consider some follow-on motions, perhaps?
Yeah.
That might be considered, that. The other was this, this environmental issue. And, and I know we get comments about, don't go beyond the policy plan, and I get that. But perhaps there are places where we should go beyond, and perhaps a follow-on motion would be appropriate that would target the policy plan, that would say, well, I don't know. In TSAs, for instance, we might do a different, a look at the environment. I'm not proposing a different environmental section for each area, but perhaps a little more nuanced thing in the future, a policy plan might, might be worthwhile. I think it's frustrating to some of the people that worked on the environmental chapter not to be able to go farther. And so I was looking for a way, and perhaps a follow-on motion would be appropriate. And my, my last one is about this, and I call it the communication. I, I think this aesthetic wasn't quite the right term of the plan. We've talked about this before, I don't want to go too far at this, this late point in time, but I think our plans are not keeping up with what we should do and, and how they communicate. And I, I think we should do a little bit better in the plan as we, we see it. And when you put graphics in, a caption that would tell you what you're supposed to be looking at, and what you're supposed to getting out, be getting out of that picture, rather than just putting some flowers in the plan and saying, isn't a size, something that would be really illustrative, and, and maybe a source would be good. But I, I think this is a planning department issue, I'm afraid, this is my personal view. It's a planning department issue, do we want to have plans that are, that communicate a lot better? And in the, in the Reston case, this is a world-renowned plan. This is studied throughout the United States. It's part of the new planning movement that started way back in 1790, when Washington DC was corrected, was created as a new town. But certainly in the 20th century and the 21st century. And people are gonna be looking at this and the way we're communicating. And I, I think it would be better if we stress this a little bit more. And it's not about just adding six or seven pictures with caption. It's about the look and feel of the way a plan is created, the fonts, what's on the pages, all of that is worth a look. I'm not sure we can accomplish all that in this plan.
Can I play devil's advocate with you, Commissioner?
No, yes, of course.
So I just heard you say it's not the aesthetic, and now you're talking aesthetics. I, I thought we were talking about accessibility to the public for this, this.
That's right, it's, it's the communication of the plan. My version is that the comp plans are the vision document. And so without the photos, without the drawings, without those kinds of graphic information, it's not very visionary to me. It's, it's hard to create a plan for an area through text. I think that's a very difficult task. Now, there's a dynamic here, is you, maybe you gotta create the text first, and you can't have a lot of these changes going on constantly with the graphics at the same. It makes it very difficult to integrate. I understand it's a difficult task. I just think it's something that we're, that the planning department is worthwhile to take a look at how we're communicating our plans to, to the public. And maybe that's enough said.
Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you. On, on that, the Fairfax Center area, which this government center is in, has an appendix with lots of illustrations about what the.
with lots of illustrations about what they mean in the plan. And, you know, if the challenge here is getting the text approved, and, you know, could that not be a follow-on, or do you think that the whole thing has to be redone?
Well, I think that's a possibility. If we could redo the text, whether the Board of Supervisors would be confident in the staff and us producing then a document that fully communicated, I don't know. That's an issue, to have something approved by the Board of Supervisors and then coming back later with the graphics. I'm not sure that's quite the right approach. I understand that dynamic. I understand this is very hard on staff, and they're tired of me saying this, I'm sure. And I wouldn't blame them if they do, but I just think we should strive to do a bit better than we're doing. And it's not just in Reston. It's, although Reston perhaps would have been a good pilot for this.
Yeah, it would. Is there anything else? Because we need to close the public hearing and then move to a motion. Commissioner Sargent?
Just one, and I'm sure it's not individual to me, but just appreciation for the citizens who participated in this very lengthy process. Your commitment to your community, your passion for what Reston is and will be is always amazing and always appreciated. So, thank you very much for your participation.
With that, I will now close the public hearing and recognize Commissioner Carter for a motion.
Yes, I move that we close the public hearing for now.
It's already closed.
Okay, so I move that we schedule a new follow-on on June 28.
Second?
Can I offer a friendly?
Go ahead, yes.
Are you moving to defer action on this?
Right. Defer action, and keeping the record open for written comments, defer action to June 28.
That's two weeks. Is that enough?
Right. Well, we'll see. Remember, this is scheduled for the Board of Supervisors on the last session in July, which is July 28, I believe.
Yeah. I think it is.
Do you have a thought on this in terms of the deferral period?
No, I was just going to confirm that the board date is July 25.
25.
Two weeks or three weeks? Commissioner Logana?
The problem is that three weeks is July 4th week, and there's no meeting. It's either the 28th or the 12th of July, I believe, is the way it works.
Yeah, I think the notion would, on the 28th, we would go through and resolve all these issues. Then the staff would need to go back and make the actual physical corrections into the plan, so there is some need to do that.
And then we would have a decision on the 12th of July?
Well, I was hoping that the decision would be so simple, we could go ahead on the 28th.
On the 28th.
Yeah. Especially if we're able to depict it in a way, the comments are clear and the response is clear.
Right. That's all I was asking.
And we have to act on the final plan, Conference of Plan Amendment. It's not acting on direction to staff, it's acting on the Conference of Plan Amendment. So all the changes that are under consideration based on public testimony have to be addressed and incorporated into the Conference of Plan for us to act on it.
Okay, well, let's try to do it on the 28th. We'll have our chart that specifies all the comments. If it's not done, then we'll have to defer it again to whatever the next date is.
12th, 15th, July 12th. Which would still be plenty of time in advance of the board date.
Of the 25th.
You know, the 25th.
Okay. It's been moved to defer until June 28, the meeting of June 28. Has there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Commissioner Logana. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Final words, I guess what I'll offer as a final is, thank you to the staff for this enormous level of effort in getting us to this 90%, 95% level of product. It's, it could have been 50% at some point in time, right? So, thank you.
We could have been dealing with.
Have a good evening, everyone. This meeting is adjourned at 10:45.